Hello, everyone. Welcome to our town council meeting. And if we could.
Councilor here. Mayor Sinister.
Here.
Coming in next up.
Here.
Councilor.
Here.
Councilor Rattam.
Here.
Councilor Beach.
Here.
There you have four.
So first off, there are presentation of couple of proclamations for Mr. Chris Edge, amazingly enough. We never see Chris here, do we? So we have a couple for you here. We're gonna want, wanna, Don, you wanna read yours and then I'll remind them all.
Sure.
Well, uh, you can read it. You can read it there, yeah.
So I have to say this has been in my car for four, uh, four weeks now, so I need to apologize for. Okay, so. From the General Assembly, I have an official citation introduced by myself, Mr. Pazzino and Senator Lopes. And be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers sincere congratulations to Chris Edge in recognition of being chosen as the member of the year and being recognized at the two thousand three C E D A S annual meeting and best practices ceremony. You have exhibited great economic development, professional leadership in Connecticut. We join together to acknowledge uh, your accomplishment and thank you for your dedication and service to the town of Berlin as uh, our director of economic development. So I congratulate you and uh, and this is not doesn't.
And we, and we do have another one, too.
We can put it in there, okay? Congratulations. And thank you for everything that you do, Chris. You do a great job. Very proud.
Chris, we have one more, too. We wouldn't let you go. I have just one. Um, so from the town of Berlin, the town council, uh, town of Berlin, everybody recognizes Chris Edge for being selected as a twenty twenty-three Connecticut Economic Development Association President's Member of the Year recipient. Uh, the award recognizes a member who has exhibited true leadership in economic development and a Connecticut community that demonstrates real results and outcomes over the past year. The CDS chose Chris for his willingness to help others in Berlin and statewide, noting that he is one of the first to respond to economic economic development colleagues' requests for guidance or resources and the fact that he tires tirelessly. As we know, the Energizer Bunny advanced Berlin's economic development and business environment in twenty twenty-three. In recognition of your dedication and commitment to, to your profession, your colleagues and the Berlin community in particular, the town council extends our thanks and congratulations for being named the CDS Member of the Year dated today. So congratulations, Chris, again. So, uh, Rocha and I, of course, went to your award event, which was very nice. That's quite the honor and we glad, uh,
Thanks.
Glad you work for Berlin. We saw you at the event. We're glad you work for Berlin. Uh, we, we know you never stop promoting the town getting, uh, businesses, uh, to move here, expand. We appreciate it all. Thank you so very much. Okay, uh, uh, next is you, ladies and citizens, um, anyone wants to, wants to speak on anything, um, uh, of interest, uh, about the town or anything on the agenda, now, now would be your time to, uh, raise your hand and I'll get folks in person and then I'll go through the Zoom audience after someone wants to speak. Get there.
I'm Ronald Gutierrez. Um, I just wanted to address one of the agenda items from today. It's the awarding of the, um, supporting the ice cream. Um, the only question I have was eligibility for it. There are ostensibly it's important to municipal arts department. Yeah, there is little.
Correct.
Department.
There is not, yes.
No, I'm just curious about, um, when you applied for such a grant when there was no existing department or secretary. I'm sure that that would be discussed.
Yeah.
In a poll later, but I wouldn't.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I, I think in short, it's just how we had to apply for the grant. Yeah, you, you, Chris, you can answer that question quickly now and then we can.
Chris Edge, two twenty, Connecticut Road. Um, when I created the account with the state of Connecticut, um, grants aren't done by paper anymore. Everything is done online. The application, uh, basically I put in kind of placeholder, but Berlin Arts Department, which is kind of a placeholder I put there. Uh, when they gave the grant to us, they added the word municipal to it. Um, and essentially, um, we had applied last year, applied again this year, and the action tonight actually will give us the ability to um, accept the funds. Um, the state actually has something that is uh, above and beyond municipal arts department is a Connecticut municipal government entity. So it's a commission on the arts department cultural affairs or other designated officer agency with an official designation to conduct indoor support artistic programming and/or services for the residents of the community. So tonight we're creating a committee to oversee it. So that is going to be the method by which the money is, um, and spent in that. So there is no actual municipal arts department. It just happened to be something I put. Um, it was actually applied for by myself, economic development director and Kim McNally, director of the library, and we worked together to do that, uh, for the grant. And again, uh, we're hoping we can do some good things with it, but the combination of the two, both the arts and the culture side, it's these are good things in Berlin. That's kind of how we, how we got to where we are.
Now, there'll be, there'll be more in our discussion, but the good thing was we applied for, um, right, fifteen hundred dollars?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, we got fifty, what, six hundred? Yeah, six thousand. So, you know, it was a good thing. So we'll, you know, we'll spread it out a little bit more. More to come, more to come on that. Uh, so anyone else from the audience of citizens? There are none here. Anybody on, uh, Zoom? Okay. Okay, all right, so we're gonna, uh, close the audience of citizens and we will go on to our consent agenda. I'll just go through very quickly before we vote. We, uh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I'm just getting mirrors update. We got, we got enough to get through time. We'll hit some of the updates up anyway on the agenda stuff. Um, consent agenda here, we've got, uh, tough control fees, um, appropriate way, maybe not for the grizzle hall, like, uh, again, the number two, except the donate will play five hundred dollars. And, and the council members, of course, have reviewed it before. We've got our packets early. Uh, we just have the record appropriate the funds to the police pan, um, expenditure account, number three, except the donation of one hundred twenty-five thousand appropriate funds to supplies expenditure account, number four, the waiving, um, least traffic control fees and the estimated amount of three hundred forty-four dollars, nine cents for the, uh, power football fundraiser for which took place on November, the police department. Uh, except monetary donation, probably eight hundred fifty-six dollars. To the friends of the library, uh, the different varying accounts. Number six is accept donations of Berlin animal control, an in account of fifty dollars for animal care. Cancel pot value is two hundred ten dollars. Number seven, except the donation of five hundred dollars to the public grounds donation by the Berlin Land Trust for bench memory of current party replacement, uh, at the West Lane Main Avenue, it's a right in that. Uh, number eight, authority command to apply for the sector to, the secular of the state early voting grant, an amount of ten thousand five hundred dollars once received appropriate funds to the early voting grant account, a special reserve fund, number nine is subdonation. Probably desk measuring a hundred and two, uh, so they commissions to the Berlin V and A for office staff use valued at fifty dollars. And number ten, offer as a senior center director to donate a thousand dollars to the retired senior volunteer transportation program from the, uh, Mirna fellows. That's for the senior center. So those are our ten uh, consent items. There was, you know, I, I'll have some more explanation in our packet. So, um, if there's any questions from the councils, now would be the time. If not, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve.
I moved to approve these consent adjournments, presentations.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second down.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the council? There are none? Take a vote on the motion. All of them favor? I. Oh. All right, so. All right, so. We are now, we are public hearings. Uh, so the first one, we'll call it the order, um.
So mayor, on the first point, it is on the agenda. The first one is on the agenda. Well, um, and it, it's on the agenda because it was scheduled and advertised. But at this point, the items almost be withdrawn. So on the V and A has come up with a more effective and, uh, efficient and that a process on the item, so we do not have to have the, uh, public hearing.
Okay. That's great. Sounds like it's a better solution. Yeah, that's good. And short term meeting, right? So, um, now we'll move on to number two. So we have a, a second public hearing. Uh, we're gonna call this public, uh, hearing to order and kind of the town council, kind of Berlin, be, Berlin Town Hall, council chambers, before the cutting them road on Connecticut Tuesday, December twelve, twenty twenty-three at seven P M for the purpose of holding a public hearing and following proposed ordinance of the town, said ordinance standing, uh, tileless files ordinance appropriating three million, two hundred thousand dollars for H B A upgrades to Murray Griswold Elementary School, twenty twenty-three. And then addressing the issue of three thousand two hundred dollars bonds of the town for me to set appropriation and pending issuance thereof, permitting of temporary borrowing for such purple, uh, the ordinance will be on, uh, open to, uh, public inspection at the office of town clerk filing public hearing. The town council may consider an act upon the bond for that stated, uh, twenty-second day in November, twenty twenty-three. That's the purpose of our public hearing. And, uh, yes.
Second page will show you how to do that.
Yeah. Yeah. So, um, then we need a motion, uh, for what I just explained, that for the proposed ordinance, have to weigh the meaning of the ordinance incorporating its full text. So, second.
Second down.
Thank you. Uh, all of them favor?
All right.
Close. All right, motion carries. And so now we are in the, uh, public, uh, comment section of this. So if there's anyone in the public that has any questions, concerns, anything about this particular item, now would be, I saying, saying, yeah.
We think it would be helpful, yeah, Tom Reed from the, from the commission this year.
Oh.
You do, you do all of you, uh, same questions. So.
Yeah. Um, yeah. Come on down. We don't have any pride before, but.
Fracta Florida, orange.
I, 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 Florida, give you a stuff there.
Yeah. Something you got. Uh, I'm Tom Reed, Public Building Commission, and, uh, yes, I'm here to answer whatever questions anybody might have regarding the status of the upgrades in H B A to Griswold and public schools. So we're not too far along in the process yet, but I can certainly tell you exactly where we are, if you have any questions.
And, and you have the public building, obviously, in this book that you both, both proposed, or the second one is for Hubbard, or?
Yeah, we're already into Willard, as you know, we did that. So we're ongoing. Um, and it's going very well so far.
It's great.
Uh, but certainly Hubbard and Griswold need, uh, the same work. They have, um, H B A systems that are most as old as I am and each day don't work. Rightly in the morning, it gets dark. But we, um, the town is applying for a grant. Uh, and in order to apply for a grant, we needed a pretty um, accurate cost estimate. So we went out and got cost estimates, two different companies um, who'd used before like their work, they're accurate, came back in and that resulted in the number that people have to, to vote on the bond ordinance. Uh, and I think at this point, uh, uh, we reviewed those and we're very satisfied with those. We think they're very accurate. In addition, the construction manager that we have on the job, Willard School, is a very, new field company. Reviewed the same cost estimate. So we have three people, three reviews on it. So we're highly confident about the numbers. Uh, if anything, based on what's going on, uh, kind of, they may get something slightly lower. We're hopeful that we'd get multiple bidders, the same way that we did for the, we're kind of restation, so thirteen bidders came. Indications are that there might be, um, and these jobs are of such a size that there might be bidders which would help with the price, but we won't know until, we and I understand the grant, um, award may come in the first quarter of the year, maybe towards the end of the first quarter, and that will determine where the town want, you want to do. But we really don't know yet. But we do have a very good handle on what we think the costs are going to be. And it would be the same from a schedule standpoint, it would be the same schedule at Willard's on two summers. Uh, when the kids are not in school with the least amount of disruption, as well as the second shift during the school year. Uh, in fact, this, I think we're, we're in real good shape with Willard in terms of the timetable right now. Right on schedule.
That's great to hear. And so I, 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 I know the public building, you guys are the experts in this. So would we do start Griswold first and then try and get through it or trying to, you know, it's kind of what we've done, right? We started with Willard, we got through it. And, uh, you know, it's taken a couple of summers, but.
There's, there's all sorts of different ways to handle it. I think that might come with how the grant is.
Yeah.
That the, that the grant, that has an expiration date.
Right.
I'm not an expert on the grant.
Which it might.
But it might come on expiration date, which means you might have to get the stuff done, which means we might have to do both schools at the same time, which would mean when we do an R F P, we, we, you know, we have a certain, there's only certain companies that can do fortunately, we know a lot of them. I, I'm not worried about
Yeah.
getting the right people in. It would be, I think it's all grant dependent, to be honest with you.
Correct.
Yeah, that's. Whatever the grant comes in, however it comes in, whatever the timetable is, we'll just adjust it accordingly. Not really a big issue, it's just an issue.
Right. Okay, no, we appreciate that. I mean, that's why we have a little bit of a, a rush to get this through is because we tried once. I think we missed something, whatever the state wanted in the grant. So we wanted to make sure we had financing in place, um, you know, before, and then hopefully we'll get, like you said, we'll get some money in the grant, which would lower the amounts we would have to borrow for the for the town, for the taxpayer. So that, that is, that is the hope. Um, so we'll get this done. I know, I think it has to be by the end of December, right?
So we, uh, yeah, we had to get those in through. But, and we like the number stuff. I mean, there, it's a good estimate. It's not a two-page, oh, I think.
They, they, they do like to see skin in the game, and I think the way we're presenting everything well, hopefully we'll see something. But thank you for all the work. Very, so appreciate it.
I'm still looking for my paycheck. Forty years.
Anybody else? Any questions, folks, or anybody on the, anything, anything? Anybody on council?
I don't know who, no. Well, it's, it's about forty-five percent of the total. We can get up to, actually, we'd say forty-one, four, three of hundreds of that, but it could be lower.
Okay. So that's what we're looking for, yeah?
Yeah.
Which would be great. You can get up to that.
Or, she gave me the number, three million, three seventy-five forty-five.
Okay. Oh, yeah. That'd be great. Uh, that's the total of, of both.
For both.
Yeah, for both, yeah. So we're gonna, what about eight, eight million?
Yeah, total of eight million one fifty, so reduced by three slightly under five.
Yeah, much better.
They're providing you get the cost as projected.
Yeah.
They're lower, even lower. So, like, so many variables.
Yeah.
I not get the full amount, that's right. I say.
Yeah, we, we never really know, as you, you know, we're hopeful, but it's a great, you know, it's a, like, great, whatever we get, we are grateful for, uh, that less of a burden on our, you know, local taxpayers. Not that it's not their tax money anyway, it's their tax money, so. Um, it's the same, it's all coming for us, but, uh, a little bit better for the town finances. So, any other questions? Okay, so we'll, we'll go ahead and, um, uh, I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, call the public hearing, uh, closed and, uh, we will move on to our, to our next public hearing. And we'll take a vote later in the meeting. So, only over a second, public hearing now. So I hereby convene a, uh, public hearing for the four million nine hundred fifty thousand dollar H B A upgrades to Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School project appropriation and bond ordinance, the ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, the devil, the public, and maybe obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. Uh, I mean, in a motion, uh, second to, uh, to waive the, uh, remainder of the ordinance reading. Okay.
A second down.
Thank you, uh. All of them favor?
All right.
Close. All right, so. So now we're back in, uh, a second public hearing over the covered school, um. We heard most of the facts. This school, however, uh, is costing us a little bit more, but, because I believe, correct me, Tom, it's, it's more, it's older, right?
That one, real close to my age and, and, um.
Yeah, okay, actually, you know what, I was gonna tell you something.
Sorry.
It is a little bit more, so unfortunately, but. It's old, it's, it's, it's older than Griswold, right?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
But the mechanical issues will, yeah, important. There, there is an older electrical system. So it needs some total, or three one. It was also a different size. I don't know the exact number of classes, but it's, you know, they car, there's different, you know, Volkswagen and Cadillac. And the school, same thing. It's a different configuration of classes, different configuration of power going into the school. And one of the members of the P B C is an electrical contractor and he said right away, it's gonna be a lot more costly because of, I didn't know what the heck you're talking about, but you're certain. Helped us a lot. So, um, that's potentially what these, is that it's a collective power coming in. There's other factors, too, but that's a big about a million bucks. The difference, yeah.
Appreciate that.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, yeah. Uh, if there's no other comments from the public, uh, anybody, anybody from the council? Hello? We're gonna, uh, both the public hearing, um, for the bound world is now closed. And we will be dealing with it in a moment here, off of our agenda. So, on to new business.
My, great, thank you. The first item on the agenda is, uh, first raised rule number seven. I'll be waiting on the public meeting because I'm considering and hopefully you approve this and spend the sixty to the range, or let the board of finance think they got, they still.
Yeah, from that, yeah, we're gonna do it tonight, yeah.
So the first item, Mr. Daff, uh, open ninety-seven and then also two given up and bond, bond ordinance, three point two million dollars by B S Y, you know, you could store, everything to store.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and, uh, take a motion.
I move the way of doing, uh, we'll come, come, we'll repeat.
Yeah. Second on that?
Second down.
And discussion, just so for a new member that just made, usually when we're, uh, operating bonds, we wait a couple of weeks, couple of meetings to let, you know, if there's more information, but this one, because we need it, but this is our only meeting, of course, and in December, and we need to get the, the grant in, uh, by the end of December. And we need to get it to the board of finance tonight, because this is their only meeting in December. So that's why we're waiving rule seven, which we usually do wait a couple of weeks, but that's, uh, if there's any questions, I don't know.
He was working on it for a long time, isn't he?
Yeah, no, it's been, we, we, we took the whole school, the all three schools, Willard, you know, Griswold and, uh, Hubbard needed this done. We started with Willard. We're in the middle of that one, if you heard. So the other two, we know we're coming down the road, which is to try and spread out the, uh, the, the, uh, financing and, and the pain to, to the town taxpayers. So we struggled a little bit. So anyway, um, so hey, if there's any questions on rule seven, motion on the floor, all of them favor? I. Close. All right, so, and motion.
Move to an ordinance appropriating three million, two hundred thousand dollars for H B A sleep upgrade near E Griswold Elementary School, twenty twenty-three. And authorizing the issue of three million, two hundred thousand dollars bond of the town to meet set appropriation and pending the issuance there of making of temporary bonds.
Thank you, uh. Uh, second. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from councils? There are none. All of them favor?
All right.
Close. So.
Great, thank you. Agenda number two is the same, first one is to, oh, they rule number seven members. Who is the, only nine fifty? You know, probably this school.
All right, same here, folks, same, same plan, just different form. Uh, we're gonna take a look at trust.
Move grade world seven of the town council rules and procedures.
Thank you. Second on that?
Okay, that.
Any other comments or questions from the council? There are none. All of them favor? I. Close. All right, so. And.
You don't have the number.
Yeah, though, uh, public for Harvard.
I moved in an ordinance appropriating four million, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars for H B A upgrades to Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School, twenty twenty-three, and authorizing issuance of four million, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars bonds of the town to meet set appropriation and pending the issuance there of making temporary bonds for search purposes.
Good second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, Donna. Um, any other questions on this, uh, motion? There are none. We'll go ahead and vote on it. All of them favor?
I.
Close. That's all.
Yes, thank you. Then I don't know the three. Next item comes up on the board of head. And the first one is, he was cool up the portal from Siemens Industry. The security camera upgrade in the high school. Probably recall the appropriate fund for this, uh, in this year, in the pistol year. Uh, Ashley is available to give you quick overview of the project. What would you ask her?
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
Uh, thank you for your support on that H B A grant. Really appreciate it. Looking forward to getting some funds back from the state, but, um, the B O E is looking to replace so, several cameras at Berlin High School that are in disrepair and in significant upgrades, in, in need of a significant upgrade to meet the school district's security standards. The old cameras run on an outdated firmware that are only manageable through a web browser. So to kind of address that problem, the district installed new servers and storage systems uh, on the, within our wide area network. Unfortunately, the improved network does not support the old cameras. So the B O E is requesting the town council utilize and approve the proposals provided by Siemens Industry through the Sourcewell Cooperative Pot, purchasing agreement. Uh, the replacement of the legacy cameras is essential to the security operations over at B H S. Improving the camera systems will restore adequate surveillance throughout the building to ensure student safety and will also serve as a critical resource in the event of emergency for any emergency responders.
It's my great cameras. We, we've discussed this, uh, for a while now. So that's kind of where we're at with this proposal, uh. Any questions? On this?
Question?
Anything? Okay. So. But you gotta try.
Need to utilize source well contract number zero three zero forty one D I V. The approved proposals provided by Siemens Industry Incorporated. At Carmel, Connecticut, in the amount of ninety six thousand one hundred fifty one dollars and ninety eight cents. It includes a bike that's not part of the community, let me hear an extra camera upgrade that ruined.
Thank you, second on that?
Second down.
Um, any other uh? Comments or questions from the council? Here we none, whoever on the motion, all those in favor? Post. Alright, so move. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. The item number four is a request. The monitoring use right now, you are five foot students. Just to cook, no, I see your, I think Ashley's. Thank you.
The Board of Ed, uh, the B O E Transportation Department is requesting the approval of a bid waiver to purchase a two thousand twenty Ford Fusion sedan. From Monaco Ford, this vehicle will be used to transport a student with physical limitations. Who is unable to safely get into and out of a van or a bus. The requested vehicle is going to replace the two thousand six Nissan Altima with over two hundred and ten thousand miles, which travels currently. Which is currently being used to transport a daily, the student to an outplacement facility approximately sixty five miles a day. Um, the B O E Transportation Kim Co- uh, Transportation Coordinator, Kim Pethickel. Has done substantial research to find a vehicle that meets the students' needs, and the B O E is seeking your support to provide the required transportation services.
Move to approve a good waiver to purchase a twenty twenty four shooting uh for the in Monaco Ford. Only three thousand eight hundred twenty six thousand. For the purpose of transporting students.
Oh, yeah, we've talked about these vehicles, so, um, any other questions on this from the council? None, but the motion, all of them favor? Post, alright, so move.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Five, uh, the design and construction upgraded science laboratory. And there are two requests, one is funding, and second one is also to, to the public building commission for the area.
This, you'll take, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah.
You gotta be on mic.
Well, thank, yes. One Director of Operations, uh, for the school system. Other pictures are going around now, of the science labs that were involved in this revolution. I know, just like the board members, so I don't know the last time any of you have been in McGee, or do I don't know the last time you looked at it. And I think that's a telling story, so these are the same things the Board of Ed saw. I don't expect you to comment on, but good, but at least you get an idea of what we're talking about. What we have is, this is a. We, the Board of Ed, uh, requested under capital plan, that they have these renovations done. Um, and when capital, and in order to do it correctly, as we like to do, we got an estimate, especially last week, and. Kind of a conceptional estimate to do five classrooms. Probably renovated five science classrooms. Uh, these, these classrooms were built in nineteen sixty eight. Yeah, they've been there for a long, long time, they haven't had any renovation done to them. Because it's not like a classroom where you go in and you know, paint it and fix it up, it's classrooms, got a lot of things, it's like lavatories back in nineteen sixty eight. And they're still using those, so it's a, it's a, it's a rather big job. Sorry, so. Basically, what the uh, the planning committee, the actual uh, capital plan committee suggested is that the. The estimate that we got was in excess of three million dollars, uh, we went to that few minutes. But because of that, what the capital planning committee requested the Board of Ed to do, to get our net specification, because. Basically, when we ask for those kind of funds, we've got to have a good backup, or we've got to, Board of Ed has to do its job and say, what do we need here? What's the reason for, what's, what, what are we trying to pay and things like that, it's called an ed specification. So what you have in front of you today, and one of the things that I can see in the package, or the ed specifications that we put together. Uh, it's not specifications like how we're gonna build something, specifications, ed specs are more like, why do we need it? And you know, why are we here in front of you, and why does it make any sense, so it's not, it's not plans, it's specs as you didn't expect. So the educational specifications for the design and construction of upgraded science laboratory classroom, that's the project. Um, we have it here today, it's been approved by the Board of Ed, uh, submitted to you for your approval and review. The projects are include planning, funding, programming, budgeting, construction, and commissioning for the operation of renovations of five laboratory classrooms. Um, the funding that was, that was considered by the uh, capital planning committee, uh, is general bonds. Um, and bonds to be issued, uh, the budget estimate that we had was done by a professional estimator. Uh, was hired through J C J Architecture, uh, and that um, estimate amounted to three million one hundred nineteen thousand dollars. Six hundred ninety seven dollars. Uh, the action we're asking for, uh, is that you need to approve the specifications, as our manager said. Uh, that we submitted and considered necessary funding for the renovation of the science labs entry for the project, and all the double commission. Which generally is the process that is now to be used. Uh, I will say there were a number of attachments to do with this, we had a, we had to do a lot of homework to come up with this project, as everyone said, it is, it is a. A scientific project, so if I may for a moment, I, you know, I'll only, I'll only just say a few words on the ed specifications. But I think it's worth while to put on the record, uh, the ed specs we've done on this November. Um, realized McGee School, I'm sure you know this, but for the record, is it's a sixth grade to eighth grade. Uh, the current student population is approximately five hundred ninety one kids. A large school, a lot of children in the ages that they learn tremendous amount of things, science is one of the things that we want to do a lot. Do a, and things, and do a tremendous amount of time, matter of fact, and asking the principal, um, we probably have eighty kids. A day going through the science. If you multiply that out, that's getting tremendous amount of kids that are teaching in these classrooms. They're very old, they're too small, and I put correctly. He also had issues, and one of the, one of the um. Initial attachments to this was studies by prior associates, two thousand thirteen, or prior associates in two thousand twenty one. For code and one for capacity and and condition of the schools. The studies were done, and I have those, we, I actually attached them to the, uh, get the ed spec on the record. But um, those were done on the higher level D school. Because they weren't done in particular classrooms, but within both of those studies, they're very sizable studies, they talk about every student in the school. They talked about the, the, the science. They talked about their whole pathway that actually, and also said they need a renovation, on top of that, there was ADA issues. Because you've got, you see some of the pictures, they're all done with cabinets, they're all done with, you have to slide underneath the work, you gotta work here, these are all too small. Half the time you can't get your legs under you. You know, it's just they're way, way over. So, it's a big job to commit and take those out, remember everything we come back with, there's something that's a new modern uh classroom. So, we had two of those studies that were done that are part of the ed spec also, um. And we had two other exhibits that were initially put on, one, one, the teachers, instructors, the science. Programs actually made statements on what the conditions were and how it would be much better if they could do this, if things worked, if it didn't work. It was very eye open for all of us, that's what I'm trying to do, pictures, pictures, I don't know all the stories, but uh, this is very neat. We've been asking to be in the capital plan, and we have to present a lot of this for capital. This has been on for a few years, it's always been a big issue, we never had an estimate, so it's very difficult to go on and say, hey, why don't we do my stuff, it's not setting us. This time we got back, it's the commission, I know where it is, I'd like to say it was a lot cheaper than I think it is, but that's not ways. So, um, and the last, and the last uh exhibit we had was the actual estimate itself. I can go through the estimate if you'd like, I can just pick out a couple of points on it, uh, like I said, it's a really, it's inaccessible, three hundred and dollars. In my mind, they call this, obviously, it's conceptualist. It's an order of math estimate, because we don't have plans to spec. You've got one, designed each one of those classrooms, one is gonna do, so this was done as a professional does when you're talking about square footage. You're talking about a modern classroom, you're talking about a professional estimator, and designer like J C J, it says, a modern, a modern science lab. What that means is that. If we caught that less, when we do the plans effect. Because this is done as an average product model, could cost you more, um, we can't speak to that yet, like most of these things, but generally speaking. Um, there's over six thousand square feet that are being talked about here. Um, three point one million, uh, that's, it's a little over four hundred fifty dollars for a foot, which is the estimate on the model of the conceptual. And so that's where you're getting, that's where you're getting this problem from. There are certain things like most of that, most estimates that aren't included in estimates, uh, but this one has state prevailing wages. Uh, it, the estimate was done basically on if it was gonna be started now, because usually today's dollars, and they're carrying for a year, so we listed the meeting. When we do it, longer we wait to do it, the price is gonna drop, obviously. Um, uh, the premises would be done the same way we're doing the H V A C, which the premises would be occupied by construction. It's really hard, we can't close the school down, some of the things that aren't included in this estimate are the soft costs for design fees. Uh, construction contingency, some things that happen, if there's labor, if there's project labor agreement, if there's asbestos and things of those nature, N F F needs not include it. So you can see, when you get to this project at the end of it. There's a good chance would be, at least what this is, maybe. But it would be substantiated by plans and specs professionally done and put out a bid, that let me do all our parts. So it's a large project, and I appreciate you guys putting in front of you and at least letting us speak with, that's what we're looking to do, um. We think we have good information, and certainly good substantiation to do this at the E. Um, E school's not going anywhere, substantial education is still looking for us. Um, these are the last, this is the last area of me that has been touched, and so, we're trying to get it on.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have a quick question, uh, Jeff, and there are only five lavatories in that school, or, so how many other?
Overall, six, excuse me, overall, seven lavatories.
Seven lavatories and only five, you're in need of major repair.
Well, they're old enough that what, we need to get this.
Some of the other two.
So, we're still not talking new, but we don't need the kind of substantial rehab.
And and these were in the sixties, you said?
Sixty eight.
So chances of those asbestos there.
I, you know, I, I, let me ask. Doc, can I ask you, we've done asbestos studies on, on those rooms? Look, it's a little. I'm sorry, I don't have that number. We totally have it, obviously.
A larger population, why, are we going down?
I, I think it's a little bit larger than it was back then, but McGee has fluctuated, and now it's stayed around the same, it was a while back, six hundred and so.
Very confident it will safely be the same.
They use. These science lab, you're right, and when they get, we have, they'll be new courses, there'll be a lot of new things on it. Things that we're not gonna be skimping on, I'm not a curriculum guy, but I get to sit with a lot of smart curriculum people. We're not gonna be decreasing it. Curriculum, a lot, permit, you know, she had school kids in the science, so we're gonna be increasing.
I wanna compliment our maintenance department, this is from nineteen sixty eight, even remarkably good condition, they've got a phenomenal job. I've been here a lot.
We find a lot, to compliment Doug and his group, the maintenance on our schools is very great, they do a great job. This is not maintenance we're looking for.
Other than some bad veneer, it looks like that.
It's just that, they're not what we need. Furniture is not really used.
I get the part, but I just wanna compliment, for the great job they did, taking care of what we had.
We find, I will tell you something, we find that a lot, if you need a follow, not even just examples like this, but. Definitely, we're looking at the portables over the visual, so, so. Maintenance on those, has been tremendous, you know, we've had them, you know, looked at by prior and everything else, maintenance is fine. I'm gonna investigate some structural stuff and things like that, that things you have to look forward to, no, this is not a. An issue of nothing's been maintained, but it's an issue of they're just not modern enough to do what we wanna do.
Thank you, appreciate that, Jeff, um, question for Jeff, so what, what will happen with this is. Um, this would go like any project, new project that we've just seen, will go to the public building commissions, and they're, they're, you know. Start doing their homework, I mean, this is a new one that we really haven't seen on the capital list, I don't think I've seen it on the list. It hasn't been approved on the capital list, and they just saw we have eight million dollars, uh, we have a police station renovation starting, so it's, you know, it's a. Another big amount of money, but we, we certainly have to look at it and understand what we need to do here, so, uh, due to the age. But that'll be the, the job of the public building commission, we'll look at that and delve into it a little bit more and, uh, see what, uh. Take some up with.
This, this has risen to the major priority for the Board of Ed as far as.
Well, we got the. The HVAC, I thought that's number one, um, but uh, we get, yeah, that's risen overnight to. I haven't heard of this in the last day here, so. No, that's fine, no, that's okay, yeah, now is the time, folks.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's. If you read the studies, I don't expect you to take them on and look at what was said here. You know, it's, they're old, they're very, very old, I mean, this is, this is Peter Russell's in my age, I bet they know.
I remember this science lab there, yes.
We followed, you, some of you folks were involved in the high school. That will be in high school, there'll be labs there. You walk through, the year before the last, the high school started walking the last, you thought you were in a jerk colony in experimental.
Hey, we got that done, so that's good, um. Alright, so, yeah, we appreciate it, Jeff, um, and we'll, we'll, um, I'm assuming the council. Will agree to send it on to the uh, public building commission, and just let them, uh, you know, do what they do best. Uh, look through this whole proposal, and uh, figure out, obviously, at some point, it will come back to us, it will go to the Board of Finance as well. I was saying, like, well, this fiscal year, so, be something on there for next, next year.
We understand the process.
You know the process.
Our, our job is, you know, you know, sure, and, and, and this is a bit important, where we gotta pay attention to, definitely, I can't expense models. Um, but it will be a priority, it's like you said, naturally, all you think he is. He's not going here, it's, it's miserable, so everybody goes, but, you know, so it's, the man is tremendous. So, I wish I could say to be less.
Yeah, nothing ever in.
Love the way we have to go with that.
Got it.
And when you got bonded, it even gets more interesting, so.
Let's see what we can do with it. So that's what we'll do, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll take a motion here, unless you guys have any other questions, folks?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it, good seeing you as always. So, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this charge.
Sending this to the. It has a lot of verbiage about. Because of providing funds for the renovation.
Well, we're gonna consider it, I, I don't know yet, you know, based upon the needs of the town, and obviously, we have two HVAC projects. We have the renovation of the police station starting, which potentially is bonded to.
I understand, but the way it's worded, we're not accepting three million.
I understand it, but the way it's worded, we're not accepting three million dollars at
No.
This point, we want to hear from the public building commission.
Yes, yeah, we're not, we're, we're just accept, accepting that that's a, that's a, we'll, we'll accept that as an estimate. That's what I would say.
And I think if we could just, I can see Mr. Mahoney is with us tonight, maybe do a little research to see if there's anything that's available out there in terms of grants, um, annual funding. You never know, there might be.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
It's education and science. So whether it's state or federal, he's.
Yeah, no doubt.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, so wind its way through, you know, the public building council, board of finance, we'll look for signs more, um, grants, hopefully there's something out there for it. So, yeah, we're not in the project. We're in the funding, we're, we're just approving that, just spec, just spec. Uh, we understand what needs to be done and then we'll, we'll go from there on what the public building says and then we'll look for, sort of towards the financing side of it.
Move to approve the educational specifications approved in submitting right of the B O E. To consider providing the necessary funds for renovation. Science labs at McGee School and to refer the project to the public building commission to review and.
Second on that.
Second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we're going to take on the motion, I'll in favor. I oppose. All right, so move.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
Tonight on number six, in what we discussed before, the running stage and object. And to the, uh, into the general time. Built it, so how would the building commission, these works, the architect, with that, uh, bad, uh, cooking companies that, that are on the, actually ranging from two million, by just four, so higher than ten million, nine, seven, there was a bit of, like, millions. They put it all together and still only the, those bit of, yes, the team doesn't continue to see two million nine oh three. So I think the quick, we have, uh, this point they're asking, uh, the council to, to more, to those, to them. They have just a big question on the project, I have the chief engineer here.
Yeah, I mean, so.
Audio was terrible.
Not good. So that. Who was that? I don't know. That is that? I'm here.
Jeff, is that you? Can you hear us?
Jeffrey, iPad, was that just recently that it was that or hasn't been that all meaning?
Hey, it's, hey, it's Jen, the audio is fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're back, okay, so we're back. Um, so, yeah, we've been dealing with this for a long time, we finally get to the point of, uh, awarding a contract, which is wonderful, uh, we do have, uh, some bonding, although there's some thoughts on how we may be able to pay for this without bonding anything, uh, from the board of finance as far as using, using fund balance, but that's still, we'll, we'll figure that out, I don't think we're at that point, yeah, but it's great that we do. And then the, the good thing about this one, like we talked about tonight about the other H back projects, although everything does go up, we know that, this one kind of came down somehow, uh, when we ultimately went out the bid, we got the two point nine million, we were up to close to, I think, five million at one point. So it went the other way in our favor, which is, which is wonderful, we've been waiting a long time, we uh, help our fleet department out and bring them up to, out of the nineteen seventies as well, uh, to upgrade their facility, so this is a, a good thing. So what else, uh, do we have to say?
Roche did a great job.
Yeah, we'll get him a little longer, yeah.
Fund comment?
Yes.
If I may, sure. We have funded two million nine oh three, four oh five, that we might be looking for.
Yeah.
There's an ordinance. Two point three point seven million. Having said that, that includes, we got a seven fifty from the state. So the two million nine will be used by the seven fifty and the million dollars that you appropriated from fund balance.
Yeah.
So the maximum that he would borrow will be one million, one point three, four oh five as it stands now.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're thinking about something else, but we'll figure that out, yeah, where we might pay out of fund balance, the rest of it, but with the board of finance.
Yeah, first one.
Have their way with it.
But we have the ordinance of.
Yes, oh, yeah, no, it's all good, it's, it's, it's a good thing. And it's great, it's reduced by the grant was wonderful, uh, thank you for that, we got that grant for the PD and, uh, that's all good. So that's the story.
Right. And just to, just to add something, um,
Sure.
After the initial bid were accepted, the P B C and the architects went at scope review meetings with the two lowest bidders. The architect recommended Millennium bidders, uh, builders who's actually being, uh, approved by the public building commission as well for this contract, but, uh, uh, there was a little more work after that and that you received in your package, the bid results summary, which is amazing, it's looking better now, as well as the recommendation award and the schedule of that is.
Yeah, that is great. And, and I, this builder, right, what I re- remember hearing, they're, they built uh, police departments or parts of police departments right here, it goes on the letter here. Yeah, I know they got some work for police departments as well, so that's, that's good to hear. Okay, folks, any other questions? We're good, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the public building commission chairman to enter into an agreement with Millennium Builders Incorporated of Cleveland Field, Connecticut. For scale, construction services related to the addition and renovation to Berlin Police Department HQ at two forty ten to preserve. An amount net with the two million nine hundred three thousand four hundred and five dollars.
Thank you, second on that.
I will second that.
Thank you, uh, if there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and, uh, vote on this motion. All those in favor? I oppose. All right, so move. Thank you, thank you, David's, uh, moving, uh, moving forward, yes, finally.
Then the item number seven is two of the license agreements to see the town of Berlin, if they have the bottom, uh, in the, for, for, for the predictions. You probably, it's all joined in, we'll build a board of managers and their council. We brought up, and you talked about some of the dead spots around town, the venue system.
Yes.
Um, it's kind of, they have been, they have been moving with the state. And we know that, um, Corporation Council has reviewed. And they are asking, uh, if you, uh, consider approving this, so that's one, you can go ahead and actually get the pricing. We need to say that, I think important to it, that this is independent, this is for the, this is, this is, um, I don't know, the, the duty and that's in chief, either, either or, you want to actually say, say something, they will come to, otherwise they'll take any questions.
Yeah. I mean, we, we've spoken about this, we obviously, we, we did, uh, a big upgrade to our public safety, um, radio systems, the fire department, police department a few years ago, but it still remains, there are dead spots in, uh, some of the service. Uh, some of the areas in town where they can't communicate by radio, which is not a good thing for public safety. So we were going, we were looking at, at, at some upgrades recently, which were an excessive a million dollars, of course, everything's a million plus today, right? Um, but, uh, due to chief, the deputy chief and, uh, working through this, if we can, uh, license it with the state system, uh, which is, uh, yeah, got, uh, some more benefits to us, we would, I think there's still, I believe there's still some costs, there will be some costs, but uh, much less than a million dollars, I believe. So it's, it was a kind of a win-win, uh, with this agreement. We can take care of that and keep, uh, our officers safe, our towns safe, uh, we covered, uh, most of the town, all of the town, I think, with this one, so, which was a good point. So that's kind of where we're at, why, why this is in front of us, so, uh, through the work with our chief and deputy chief, we got this agreement, uh, we will have this agreement and state use their system. So if there's no questions, go ahead and take a motion on that.
Move to authorize the town manager to sign the aforementioned license agreements, like M O U with the state of Connecticut. Connecticut Department of Energy, but emergency services and public protections.
Your second on that?
Second that.
Okay, um, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? I, I oppose. But so move.
Great, thank you.
Bye.
Tonight on number eight is a recommendation from the park and recommendation on the, uh, in the bit, not doing a royal pool. And work towards mediation of that area. That's a, don't, don't deal.
Ron.
So Donald, who are they representing, uh, Parks and Rec? So. Oh, yeah. Okay, um, Jen is on Zoom. Um, Steve is not able to make the meeting, uh, but in any event, um, for the benefit of the new council members, this has been discussed all back to twenty twenty two. Um, and I passed out pictures, some of the other council members have seen before, but so that you see them of the condition of more than your pool, please, Berlin. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission unanimously recommends that we do close the pool complex. The pool has significant repairs that need to be made to the, to the uh, right now in the capital, I think there's three hundred thousand. We have that number for repairing the pool for a liner into the pool. Um, however, uh, you know, we just don't think it's worth the money. There are also probably some unknown issues, we did close the pool this past season in the summer, there's staffing issue. So you close a pool, it's old, over thirty years old. Um, it had not been well maintained as far as, you know, praxis and things. Um, so, um, we have the, the significant repairs, the age of the pool. Um, over and above that was looked at attendance, we do keep attendance records at H M D events that we have. And, um, prior to this past season, which we had closed, there's been a declining attendance in East Berlin for the pool. Uh, Percival has been a slight decline, but nothing like we saw at, uh, at the East Berlin pool. Um, on average, there were about, you know, twenty attendees a day for twenty twenty two. And some days there weren't even anybody that showed up. And so here we, you know, pay for lifeguard staffing. Um, but there's just, you know, low attendance. Why? During COVID, a lot of pool, um, permits were opened up, a lot of people have their own pools. And, um, perhaps, and I, you know, can't speak to this in detail, but I did talk to the educational department and, you know, Hubbard Schools has had somewhat of a decline in enrollment, so maybe the population in that area is getting older. That could be one of the reasons. But we don't see it recovering and what we do know is that Percival can take on. Even, you know, the thousand people or attendees that went to DeMordenda in the summer of twenty two. Again, it's on average about twenty people a day. So, uh, we can certainly take that out, we did take it out in twenty twenty three. The attendance of Percival didn't go up because we had closed East Berlin. So, um, so why spend the money? This is our thought process, why spend the money on repairing a pool? And again, we estimate, just estimate, you know, somewhere around three hundred thousand when you have declining attendance. In addition, we did compare ourselves to other area towns. And if you look at, uh, and I'm not going to include ti- cities, you know, but if you look at Weathersfield, um, Plainville, Rocky Hill, and compare them to Berlin. And I can speak to Cromwell as well. Those pools have one outdoor pool. And the population, we have about, you know, a little over twenty thousand. They have between seventy thousand, Plainville to twenty, I think twenty three thousand. So, I'm sorry, twenty seven thousand in Weathersfield. So we're right in the, they have one outdoor pool. Uh, and they have an indoor pool, they have the benefit of an indoor pool, which we do not. In Cromwell, they do not have any confidence that they have. Just so that, you know, that's what they are. Um, we have looked at other projects, as previous council members know, um, we're pretty excited about some things that we'd like to do in that area. Um, one of them being a splash pad, which is the new thing out there, uh, for younger families. Even teenagers and quite frankly, uh, visit a lot of splash pads and I see a lot of seniors pulling themselves off. Um, so we think we can do something pretty exciting in that area. Uh, for Berlin residents, whether they be in East Berlin or otherwise. And we think the money is better spent to something like that, that I think will get more use of than we would, you know, again, repairing the pool. Um, the other part of it is the unknown of being able to hire enough staffs. We closed the pool this year because we were not able to get supervisory staff for lifeguards. Um, we kind of lost that whole train with COVID. We had, you know, full complement, pre-COVID. Then COVID came. And, you know, we closed pools, one year, we kind of lost the feeding mechanism that we had, become a lifeguard, then become a supervisor, and then, you know, there's other levels beyond that. There's training that's involved for each of the levels, um, but the supervisory group kind of dispersed, they got jobs elsewhere. Um, they can make more money and we only open the pools between forty eight, you know, fifty five days out of the year. So if you're a college student, you will probably get a job for a little longer, get out of school in May, we open the pools right after school gets out here in June. And of course, we have to close them in, like all towns, in middle of August. Um, because college students go back a lot earlier. So you're only looking at, at today's, at maximum, thereabouts, for use of an optimal. So unanimously, we do recommend that we close the pool, the picture is there, there's five pictures, just to quickly step you through those. The first one is the stairs. The stairs, if you were to visit and please, if anyone would like to visit, we can take you on a little tour too. But you'll see the store, the stairs are warped. Again, can you use it? Yes, we have used it for a number of years. Okay, but the cracks are getting more visible. You know, you could just see it, this, those, the, uh, warping is a little more deeper than it was. Um, you can see the coping on the next picture, the fracking, and that's why this liner would come in if we were to fix it. Um, based on recommendations from contractors, you put this liner in, which it was foreign to me because I have a pool and I have a liner, but these are, you know, concrete pools, I didn't realize you put a liner in them, but they're super, super plastic liners that would go in, that would adhere to the pool and protective of the cracks. Again, how long they last, I'm not even sure, but I don't think you get more than ten. Um, but you can see the coping cracks and this is, you know, throughout, it's not just one area, it's just throughout the pool, the decking, all around the decking has significant cracks, you can see they tried to put, you know, some cement, things like that or to fill them. Um, but even that's starting, you know, to kind of warp a little bit as you walk through. There is a waiting pool at Hubbard that would have to be totally knocked out and repaired if we wanted to replace it. Um, but we haven't, quite frankly, we haven't incorporated the waiting pool, this is, it's a, this repair, that's, which is sincere, um, that uh, it would have taken significant dollars just to replace that, so we haven't even operated that for a few years. There are complaints in the first couple of years and then everybody got used to it. Nothing since. So we did have a meeting, uh, we tried to publicize it, it was early good attendance in October. We had it at Hubbard School, so they'll allow the East Berlin, um, residents to come, you know, make it a little bit easier than coming over here. And, uh, I, you know, I was pleased with the attendance and I'd say there's, um, the minutes are available to anybody who certainly wants you to. Probably four or five people spoke, they would like to see the pool kept. Uh, no one spoke from the public saying absolutely close the pool. Couple people did talk about closing the pool and talking about other projects that they'd like to say splash pad being the number one. Uh, pickleball courts being another one, you know, what can we do with that area? So, um, those were a couple of things that came up and I, I, to be fair, uh, we did hear some complaints on, you know, they, it's hard for people to understand what goes into hiring lifeguards, you know, they think it's very easy, they think every kid wants to be it, quite frankly, you know, no one really wants to be a lifeguard unless they can make some good money and have it for a while. That's why the towns with an indoor pool have a feeding system and have the feeding system even during COVID, didn't lose it. So, um, unfortunately, you know, we, we were in that situation. Okay, that's, that's where we're at. Um. That's the pool itself. What we would like you to do. Um, is from a capital standpoint. Is to allow us to do a feasibility study. Steve Wood would head it up. We're looking for thirty thousand dollars of capital. That's the second piece of our request. And reason for that is we want to make sure we have better cost estimates. To close down or remediate the pool. The pool was built in wetlands, the swamp, there was a swamp, you know, back then. Um, and even now, you know. We have to put special valves into the pool and you can see the water just comes right in from the wetlands right nearby there. Nothing's wrong with that. We close the valves during the summer when you operate the pool. But, um. You know, you certainly have to do it the right way, protect the environment, blah, blah, blah. So we'd like him that feasibility study to understand what the, what the costs are, because you're going to have to close down that pool if you move ahead of them. Um, so that you can, you know, take a look at that number. In addition, we'd like to. Understand the cost of putting in a splash pad. We've provided some, you know, basic description of a splash up to the mayor about a little bit. But at least we can get a better cost estimate for you and, um, for your consideration. And then with the tennis courts that are there, we do have temporary pickleball courts. They are used, they are outdoor. Uh. But we'd like to convert those to full pickleball courts, get a few more in those. Those are the only pickleball courts that we have in the town. So. So if, if there's other things we can do in that area, but again, I think the big dollars. Are going to be, you know, thought of with splash pad, but also we close down the pool remediate. And we can talk about that area, the big area. It's nice. I think, I think it could be a pretty special place, quite frankly.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate that info. So I'm just thinking, uh, logistics wise. Before we vote to close it down. And we get, we, we probably need to get a little bit more information. I'd like to see a little bit more specifics on the splash pad. Um, just before we say go ahead and do it, right? We don't.
Oh, yeah.
Like you mentioned, you don't have. We don't have the real figures yet, right?
Right, right. We have, we have a range, but, right, we'd like to get better estimates for you. Um, but that's why we need to carry out with part of capital. And I, we don't want, we don't want to wait. Until the end of this year, November, by the time. You guys figure out the audit, you know how much money you have. It's November by the time the board of finance, then we come in, get your approval, and we go back to Florida finance. We wouldn't be able to get this done until two thousand and twenty six if you do it the way, you know, you would normally allocate capital, capital, okay? So what we're asking for is just give us thirty thousand, allow Steve to get this done. You know, um, just say between February and May. You know, somehow we'll schedule that in, uh, with his workload. We'll get that done and allow you to see those numbers and go through it with your detail. So that you could consider possibly if for any funding from any surplus that you have in the next capital. Just thirty thousand.
How do we know it's thirty thousand? Like, where's that estimate for that?
Steve has talked to a couple of consultants and that's, that's what he said.
And we, we don't have that in our packet. So can we do this? Could we put it in our packet for the first meeting in January?
Yeah, sure. We will ask Steve through, uh.
Yeah, because that's a good idea and I agree with it.
Yeah. You know, like, you can, this don't, that weekend.
Right, he would like, he needs some flexibility. No. Get it approved to do it and then come back to you so that you can.
Yeah, that'd be great.
You want to move ahead. You know, it's always a year ahead. So we'll ask you to provide.
There was no money again, had for in.
Yeah.
Okay. It was referred to as part of thirty thousand for the feasibility study, but there was nothing. And we're going to have practical opinions about the funding.
Right, and so. Hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, so the reason they weren't, we weren't asking the money was the more, the focus was more on. Making the decision to close the pool so we can start to move forward with the idea of the feasibility study and the plan for the feasibility study, knowing we might be having the money coming. If the plan is to hold off on the decision to close the pool until we get the feasibility study done, then we face the conflict of. Okay, so do we start posting for jobs? Do we tell people they still have jobs at, you know, that pool and everything? Because that all happens in January, February, when we start to post to hire for those positions.
Okay, no, I understand that. So if, if, I think if you, so we understand the urgency. If you could get this to us, just. The estimate for the feasibility study, just a little bit more detail, we can make that vote in, yeah, January.
For finance.
And then it'll go by, for finance after us.
Even if we decided to keep the pool open, you wouldn't get the liner this year.
Right, we cannot.
Or anybody that's somewhere either way.
And again, yeah, we wouldn't be able to operate the pool this year or coming anyway, so if I don't be ready.
Right, so, but so, yeah.
Yeah, I would say for finding, so it's like, well, let's take a decision, but we have to open the pool.
Well, let's wait until we get the.
Because you can't open it.
Well, can't open it. Not even saying anything yet, but if we know we're not going to be able to do it this. Even if we decide to open it, right, by the time we get the liner, if we, if we did that, you can't.
We need you to approve the, you know, just say it's three hundred thousand, what is, right? It's three hundred thousand to get the liner and now you got to order it in time of season twenty twenty five summer that you would operate a pool again.
But you're going to give us more specific cost, right?
From this feasibility, but, but I'm not, right, we're not firming up the cost of the liner. We're firming up the cost to close down.
How do we firm up the cost of the line? Well, can we get?
He did, he did have estimates before for the capital.
So can we have all that in January, the first meeting? So we have like everything, like a decision? I mean, we need to see numbers. As I, I know the board of finance is going to ask for that anyway, but I know.
What numbers, what numbers are you specifically looking for? Just what, what it would cost to do the liner if we, if we were to do it?
Let's say we decided to keep them open and we know we got to do the liner and whatever else we have to do. If it's, if, you know, if it's three hundred thousand total, is that just the liner? I mean, obviously there's probably other work we have to do. And then feasibility, like if we have. Would that, yeah, again, rough estimates on the splash pad.
We already gave it right, last batch, two hundred fifty thousand. But to install it and to install it in the area that we painted without, assuming we close the pool. You know, there's piping and everything like that. That's what we want to firm up along with the other products.
Can we, can we do that by January? At least get some.
The, the, the actual feasibility study, which, you know, we're asking for thirty thousand, the thirty thousand came from Steve doing research on what that would cost. That's what he submitted to the capital committee, which they, you know, tentatively approved until it goes to the next step. The actual numbers that we would get from the feasibility study would be months down the line because the feasibility study cannot be done by January. That would need to be done, you know, over the course of a few months. That would get us the cost for the tennis courts, the pickleball courts. Um, upgrading the building and stuff like that.
I would like to see if we fund the feasibility. And then gradually possibly come back to by option. Keep the pool as five hundred thousand or build this bike bed, bed with the football courts at. Three fifty, I'm picking numbers out of the air, but then we have some kind of balance, what are we going to get for our money? But I understand we need to move forward, we need to study, so I would like to move forward with that in a few.
Yeah, they like, maybe you can give us an estimate, you know, just a little bit more.
Well, I think Jen, if I'm going to, they're looking forward, okay, here are the couple of vendors. Steve went to get an estimate for the. Here are the vendors, here's what they said the range is, that's why we put thirty thousand. And this is what it includes, the detail that it includes, which is kind of summarize here, but we'll, we'll actually present the, uh. Is that okay at work?
I understand though, either way, the pool can't be open in the summer. Right, and I'd say we're going to have a.
You need a lot of it. And again, the liners, there's a lot, maybe, no. And. We wouldn't want to spend the money, it's, you know, again, look at the attendance.
Right, so what would be helpful is they were just not going to open.
Take the money.
Well, that, that's what the motion is for, is for you to, the Park and Rec Commission made that decision at the next. At their last meeting that we shouldn't open these Berlin pool and we should start to move forward, what else we can do in that area. That's what Don is coming with you tonight from the Park and Rec Commission.
Right, I think we, we have that. We'll make sure, we'll make sure for you, and if there's more information, we can go for you, okay?
I appreciate that. Yeah, yes, sir. Just, just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Um, I know three of. These three individuals, unfortunately, but their family members still, some of them still live it down. So I would like to retain the name, whatever you put there.
Of course.
And if you look at it's. The more agenda that they're showing your pool complex. Again, full complex is made up for them. Maybe the pool has to come out, but we can absolutely have to do that.
According to Don.
Yes.
Since you're here.
Yeah.
Since you're, so we, we have something later on the agenda.
Yes.
Can we move that up? Would you be happy or you can wait till the end, you know?
To wait?
No, let's, let's move on. So, yeah, yes, it's.
One question, uh, since pool was closed. Uh, and there was money, money budgeted to have that pool, you know, to run the pool, what happened? Money, uh, how much money was budgeted to run pool this year? Where's that money at now?
So I, I don't have the exact figures, but I will tell you, uh. What we do have is it costs about thirty thousand annually to run the pool, then includes lifeguards, water, blah, 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 chemicals. Uh, maybe slightly less because, uh, DeMordenda is about a hundred seven gallons and Percival's three hundred thousand. So one might be thirty five, one's twenty eight or something like that, but it's somewhere in that range annually, so, um. I, you know, on the budget, quite frankly, they took the money. Uh, for twenty twenty three, when we told them, you know, they're not able to run it because of staffing, and they used it elsewhere and that's.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering where the money went from.
Yeah, I, I can't tell you, but it could have stayed within, uh, parks or rec or public grounds, or maybe they took it and put it somewhere else. But it was the right thing to do.
That is right.
Yeah.
Jennifer, you have the answer? The labor cost and all that.
I, I don't know what the labor cost off the top of my head. I do know that currently we are budgeting to open two pools because the decision has not been made to open only one pool. So currently, budgets that were submitted a few weeks ago at the end of November, we. But because their decision has not been made, we budgeted to open two pools. Where the surplus funds went from last year, um, I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's just capital versus operating, you know, the capital. So, so that's right, fair enough. I can also tell you is. Steve Wood is exceptional down public grounds, I don't know what the, before, but. Walk pistol cream, look at the new bridges that, that his teams installed by themselves. These bridges are beautiful. They did not hire any outside contractors. They did it themselves and they did it fairly quickly because of the rain, country had. Move up a, uh, help country meet. And these guys worked their butts off. And they're just beautiful, beautiful bridges. I actually brought it to, you know, the golf commission, said, you know, something to consider. Anyway. Great job with the.
Don't, don't know anymore.
Okay.
So, so, so we'll see that we get the first meeting in January, we can.
Yeah.
And we'll make, we'll make it.
We'll have Steve go through the road show, what he has, make sure it's what you want.
Yeah, appreciate that. Appreciate that. So can we make a motion to move, uh. Item eighteen up to, um, I think what? Just move it up now, so we're going to take up. We're not moving, we must go to numbers, okay? Gets over ten, we get confused with numbers. We'll make it eighteen. We're just going to take up eighteen now, that's all right. Yeah, I'm going to move another one. Uh, okay, thank you on that. Thank you. All of the favor. I. Pose, all right, so, so, Don, while you're here.
Yeah.
So. This is the, uh, uh, you know, for our community senior center, the town. Project that we've, uh, been going over for a while. So we had a, uh, meeting and, uh, what was that like? When I said, I remember beginning in November, I think we had a meeting with some residents at the senior center. We talked about it. We talked about the size of the building. The original building was, uh. Uh, seventy thousand square feet, which is, uh. Massive, massive, massive size, uh. Uh, all sides don't have anything close to that. I don't even think cities have them that size, but whatever. So the prices, you know, we're talking, I don't know, forty million, forty five million by now. So what we got out of the residence, you were there, right? And so, did you go to that? No, you didn't go. Okay, so what we got out of the residence was, um, let's, let's try. To send it back, which I, I would go ahead to, to yourselves and I guess the commission and the agent worked on it. And shrink it down. Somehow, we've got to, we've got to shrink the size of that building somehow to come up with some reasonable numbers that we could consider possible. So, and, and I, and I don't, I want to, I want to, we want to do it fairly quickly, um, so we can get. Moving on this, there, there will be a parallel option we'll look at too, not, not you guys, but we're going to look at the, the YMCA as an option as well. But we need to get this, you know, shrunk down. With whatever you think, and we got to look at the statement of needs again, or, and, and then we'll, I get an architect, just do a very rough. Drawing, we're not going to do a whole big plans because we don't even know what we're going to end up doing with. With, if it's a town building or not, but just to get it moving again. Would that be, uh, possible?
Anything's possible. Yes, it's possible. Um, and I'm. I'm a straight shooter, okay, so. I heard that you were going to have this to revise the state of the need. I understand that. I was on the committee to look at it. And I believe that was one of the recommendations back in April of twenty twenty two. Um. Suggestion. Why don't you tell us how much the board of finance says? We think, and of course, it's only thing, I think we could afford thirty million or twenty million. And then, and then we've worked with the architects to say, what can we get for that? Um, yes, we can shrink it down. And, and, you know, we, we, we came up with ideas, committing, but it, it. Didn't make a difference because the numbers were too big for people to accept, right?
Sure.
So, so it was fifty seven million then, that same building, seventy thousand square feet with inflation prop, I don't know, seventy million? But it was fifty seven before.
That's thirty eight in the beginning, when we met at iPhone.
Very, very beginning.
Yes, thirty eight, so. Maybe fifty.
Fifty seven, fifty five.
All right, we don't know. And we don't even know what size is smaller. I mean, maybe the smaller size building is fifty million by now too, but we don't know.
So, so. To be fair to the commissioners. My concern is we go down this path.
Yes.
And it doesn't matter. Because you're going to say the number's too big.
No.
So I would rather, well. I think you will because, because your board of finance has also said that, and it, he said it in July of twenty twenty two. Twenty million would be a challenge. So twenty million is a challenge back then. What's the challenge today? And I know in twenty twenty six, we brought it up, the debt goes down to forty million, but again, debt can, you know, for our sized town. It was too big of a nut for people, so, so what is the number? Because. I, I already, I have ideas how to bring it down. I don't know what the cost impact would be.
Well, I don't know, because you bring it down.
We, we don't know, right?
You got to bring it down before we can send it out for a cost.
I'll, I'll, I'll bring it down, but my concern is I'm going to end up at forty, fifty million dollars and you're going to say, throw it away. Talk to the Y, because you're going to do that anyway, and that's okay. That's, you know, that, but, but. The commissioners are spending, we're spending a lot of time.
Well.
And I, I really feel that you already, you know, you, I would. I think you've already got a, a preconceived idea of what you want to do. And so maybe we need to focus on that idea first. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, you're going to have us go down this path and to be fair.
Yeah.
Even to the residents.
Yeah.
You don't want to spend. And I, I don't say you personally.
Well, not me. I don't think the residents want to spend. You've heard what the people said, but. But that doesn't. What, what does that have to do with it? They're not voting on the seniors, they're not voting on candidates. What, what is the election?
And, and.
Right.
In order to build a community. In order to build a community senior center that involves everybody, all the residents, you really need the support of the administration. Okay, and.
No, no.
Yes, you do. I can't, I cannot.
No, Donna, listen, listen. Uh, what I'm, what, what, what we're thinking is you, you come up with a, a smaller building. We put a price tag on it. We put, we have a plan from the Y, send them up to a referendum, they'll let the voters decide, not me, and we're not deciding that here. It's gonna be the voters most likely in the end.
But.
So we gotta give them something.
But.
We told them we would. That's what we told them at that meeting. We're, but that's what we're gonna do.
Pre-election, right, so.
Doesn't matter, pre-election, but that doesn't have anything to do with it. We promised them what we would do. We would shrink the building.
You, you shrink the bill, what, what do you want the building to be? And I.
You did the state of needs, correct?
But, but I'm just telling you the reality and I don't know the architect that you're considering. But it's gonna cost a, a new architect that you might be considering money to catch up to speed on what we have.
We, we have the grant money. We have what, three hundred grand left in the grant? Five hundred grand left. So we have the money to pay the architect from the state.
Yeah, but you're limiting this to thirty thousand.
Yeah, just for this space.
For the, to come up with a cost.
Yeah.
Based on a reduced statement of need. I'm just saying, I, to me, I just, and again. You're gonna ask us, we should do what you ask. But I'm just trying to be fair to you, to everybody, is that. We're going down a path. I don't think that you're.
We're going from trying to come up with a little bit less expensive building and see where that goes. We don't know where it will go.
Sure. I think that. You ha- you have to work with your statement of needs, okay? That, you should not be backing into any project, okay? So don't come in that way. Right. What are our needs? And, and I think that's where we need to start from. And yeah, it's extra work and yes, we're going back to the drawing board, but I think that's what needs to be done at this point in time. I don't think we should be, you know, and it's not our wants and it's the whole community. You should be starting from scratch. You have, you have something granted. I know it's extra work for everybody, but it's gotta work. And it's gotta be with the people.
I do agree with you that. Not right from scratch, but we do, we need to revisit.
Yes.
Like go back to the community centers that we visited, that we, right? We need to do a better job with our statement of need. We need to tell, use the programs that we're gonna run and why we need such. Numbers of staff to even manage. Right? Because you need to consider operating costs. That, that's not gonna be done by April. I don't know what your timeline is, but. It took.
Anything's possible, remember?
But, what do you, you know, what's the quality of the work? And I wanna do it right.
Yeah.
And, and I could sit down right now with Roche and, you know, if you want to.
Yeah.
And we could go through the statement of need. I could give you ideas where you can cut. But.
There's a start, okay?
Yeah, well, we did that. And we know, we know that, we know of the fifty-seven million. We have a detail list in our packet, in our report. How much the pools were, how much the gym was for pickleball, you know, and other things, how much this was. So now we shrink it. And we can do that and we should come up with one statement of need, by the way, community and senior center. I don't want two separate statements of needs because people are saying we're duplicating. We really didn't duplicate, but I, I want one statement of needs. And I'm, I'm willing to work with commission on aging, obviously, to do that.
Right, with them too, yeah.
Well, maybe we need a different approach. Our swimming pools are at the end of their life cycle, all of them.
Yeah.
Uh, swimming pool in New England outwards is an absurd investment. They don't live very long, they cost a lot of money, you can't use it much. We need an indoor pool.
Yeah.
We get about three years later. We need an indoor pool, whether we build community or not. Maybe think outside the box. Maybe the pool is more of a parts and rep product. Maybe we should think about an inflatable building. Maybe think about field structure. There's a lot of different ways to approach it and a lot cheaper ways. There's been an inflatable building over at the University for, I think, twenty-five or thirty years. You know, there, there's a lot of different styles of construction. To build typical concrete and steel building is very expensive and then the pool probably destroy it for a bit. But put your other option. And then one of those dangers, how many. Uh, recreation spaces, what kind of, when the gym. Maybe one of them all in the one building is a long approach. I just let people think about this one option.
Yeah, no, totally. I'm ready all the way.
Whether we, whether we go for the. The indoor pool with the senior center or in the same building or not, you'll need for that pool, like, I go away. When the next pool fails, then what? And if they build another one outside, it'd be not, not logical.
Right.
I think we're like, we want it. Yeah, we want indoor pool, that's the goal.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but, you know, again, town funded senior community center or all. Those are two different paths. And as reported, as, um. You know, John Bedingley is a great guy and I love the Y. They have their mission. He will tell you straight out. He's not replacing your senior center. He's not replacing parks or recreation. He doesn't, that's not his role. He has his mission. They make their money on childcare. They provide recreational services and they wanna do it for all ages, not just, you know, kids or youth or, you know, despite violence. But, but they're not replacing anything. They, they will not run the senior programs. If they have a pool, they'll allow seniors, you know, to swim in it, right?
You went to the Meriden Y, right? During the day, Meriden Y, yeah. And who was in that pool during the day?
Yeah, no.
Seniors, right, so.
Right.
You know, it, it.
Yeah.
We're gonna have the Y come and make the presentation too, but in every city and, and. Town and across America, the Y. Is a community center. I, I don't know where you're going to, but Connecticut, but in California, Virginia, where I live, Stanford, you name it, um. So it's an option. That's all we're doing, Donna. That's just another option.
Yes.
It, it, you know, I mean. You know how much to hire the staff, you know how much a pool costs, just carrying costs a year is at least half a million dollars.
I'm just telling you, he's gonna tell, and again, he's on the record.
Well, he's gonna come here and tell us. We're gonna hear him. I, I think that record has been misinterpreted a little bit, but whatever, but we're gonna have him come here and talk about it.
All right.
That's another option. But so can we?
Yes.
That could be an option with a bubble with an indoor pool and we could shrink the building, whatever options, whatever you think might work. We're open to any. We're not giving any parameters, but we're just, we gotta make it less expensive.
We can meet if we go. You know, one day.
What people need to think about is.
Yeah, maybe.
She's talking to money.
We can tell you the ideas. There were our, yes, they're in the report and we, you know, it could be.
From this point, being spent on this indoor pool that gets done would be a savings on the other end, on the other.
Yeah, exactly. Like the seven hundred and fifty thousand to make them both ADA compliant. That you have each pool, right? Absolutely. The capital freed up to help. Yeah.
We're trying to be as creative as possible, just to. You know, we, we can't afford to spend a.
So.
Fortune.
Part that I was gonna add on this because. The summary agenda, I. Talked about using the thirty thousand. And that thirty thousand would be from an architect, not the same architect I take it.
Yeah.
Right? So a different architect.
Right.
And then it will include, as it's stated here. Uh. Selected architect can assist with evaluating project scenarios for a partnership with the Meriden Y, the project basing. So the thirty thousand is not just to come up with a process, but, but can also assist in looking at alternatives for Y. I got, I took that as a very big surprise to you.
I didn't write that, love that. Well, that's.
Jim and I, the, the reason is.
Yeah.
It. Y is gonna make a proposal.
Yes.
And if they wanna tap into some of the work already done to give us the sense of the price, can do it. Afterwards. So I, and also, we, we want the past practice.
Yes, we do.
And if, next time you need two dollars, we can come back to the council again.
Yeah.
Right, right. So just keep the flexibility open. You, you don't, you're not gonna do anything with the Y.
It's. Of course not.
Separate group.
I would like to.
No.
Yeah. Because.
That's not.
Right.
That's not part of our general and, and the commission of aging, right? It's the very good work of group working on it.
Yeah.
Little kind and bring a proposal and you'll have your proposal and the mayor said you can compare the two and. But it's apples for apples on a.
Yeah, we get, you know, we wanna have another, once we get some of this stuff, we wanna have another. Public meeting. Get it to the folks that came to the Latin, right?
Sure.
We left this, what I left with them was we're gonna try and shrink the town building. We're gonna get some more info from the Y. And we'll see where we go from there.
And, um.
That's what we, that's what we.
What is the timeline?
Best is.
We're meeting Thursday night, just our official.
Yeah.
Age and commission. I mean.
I mean, I don't. March. Or faster, whatever, whatever we think, I mean, you know, it's, I mean, there's no hard deadline, but. We wanna get this done.
But if you want it done right, this is what I, you do our statement of need. We go back and we visit.
Yeah.
You know, right? We do our statement of need. You need staff involved in it. You need staff to understand that they need providers with programs that are gonna run. Because I wanna understand. Staffing levels. How many people we need, blah, blah, blah. Won't know that until you know what kind of programs are run.
Oh.
Include the pool. Yep, and.
That's a little.
We don't.
We put the other.
Right up the.
Something at the end, we'll look at.
Yeah, I agree with that. And then the architect will work with those. So we've got the architect hired. I do my number and we'll get going. I will do one statement of need. You agree with that? I think that's the best thing, combined community and senior center. So that the avoidance, there is no duplicates, there's nothing, you know.
So. Just with the YMCA and the park, right? The YMCA, as we know, is in town already. I think they work with the Park and Rec already, right, on program, do they? I, well, let's put it this way.
Run.
Oh, stuff like that, right?
They don't, yeah.
Right.
They.
Gotcha.
It's, it's not really.
But we have the YMCA daycare is in McGee's school, right? So it, it, you know, it, it's.
Yeah, and he, he would like to move all that into one location.
If we did, if we did the Y, just, just, it, it would be a partnership with the town. It's not, they're not an island unto themselves. They, they aren't that way in any town I've ever used the Y in, but. That's not what we want. They're already in the community. They already. I mean, we're in their building. We made a deal with them to use their building for our transition academy so they could put daycare in McGee's, so. You know, they're already here. They're already a partner. I'm talking like public, private partnership here, you know, maybe. That, that's the other option.
Yeah, and they, they, they do superb job.
Yeah.
With the role they take, I take, and I do, I really respect John Bedingley a lot.
Yeah, so we'll see what they say too.
Right.
And then I'll work you.
Sustainability. They already have a little. Plain building by the Hartford Y.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, one of his concerns is being more satisfactory, but again. It may be.
Well, well.
Or maybe he'll.
No, that's, that's, that's not true. Just correct it. They wanna build one in Burl.
Yeah.
They, they have come to us and asked us. I haven't gone to them. I've come to others. We wanna build in the same place.
Yeah.
We wanna put our community center, if that's the option. But we don't know if that's the option, I check. So we need to, we need to hear it all. Before we make a decision. We can't just make a decision without all the info. We need all the facts, which I don't think we have.
I, I, I don't, but I will tell you, we haven't had a chance to take a little bit of the detailed report and unfortunately, some of it's buried into the attachments. Take a look at the report that was done by the committee with the attachments. You will see, uh, and obviously, it's probably on videotape too.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know. There's, there's some very good information there and, and even some thoughts about how things can.
So can we? Have Roche with, uh, open reference to. Jen. You guys.
Jen, Jen, you're still on, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, Donna, do the best you can, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out if we go.
No.
That's our best rules.
And again, get the architect your, you know, number. We'll start using them now.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just wanna move one more up really quick because I see the chief there and I just wanna get this done. We're not, we won't, we won't discuss it much, yes.
Then we're gonna make a motion, take a motion for these two items to refer it to the.
Yes, oh, yeah, let's make those two.
Move to return. Community Commission on Aging to consider revising statements of need for the community center. While senior center project could bring down the project broken.
Any other comments or questions?
So just.
Do we not all the favor? I, I.
Move to authorize the town manager. The contract with architect. On solid, not pretty slick, thirty thousand dollars.
So.
It's one K from the. From the architect.
Thank you. Second on that. Any other comments or questions? All in the favor, that's okay, hi.
Excellent.
Alright, so, um. Let's just, I just wanna discuss very quickly. We're gonna probably save most of this discussion for the next meeting because time is a waste. Um. Agenda item twenty-two, the upend of senior housing. So I just wanna, uh. Mention that if I could. It's a discussion item, uh. So there's a lot of history that are. Yes, mo- motion, I'm sorry, motion.
I, I move to, uh, take up, I remember twenty-three.
Second on that.
A second there.
Thank you. All of the favor. Both, all right, so. Very quickly, I just wanted to bring our council members up, up to speed that. How we can do it, hold on, very good thumbnail sketch, we can talk to. At length on this, but going back at least ten years, um. We had the. Plan, we found out the plan is going to do senior housing and the, where the Knights of Columbus was, um. And we've tried and tried and tried desperately. Obviously, we, uh, we, uh. It's gonna be from the Berlin Housing Authority was the one that was going to, um, you know, get this housing going, obviously for the seniors and. We had a lot of issues along the way. There was easement issues with the state that we weren't aware of and on and on and on. There's funding issues because you can't call it senior housing. There's just been a lot of issues. So finally, this year. Uh, we come to fruition, uh, I think it was September, Roche, we had the special meeting that the housing authority, um. Board of Directors, Joe Bajorski. Had thirty-four million dollars to build our housing. So we, uh, we had a special meeting, we had a closing, we hired, uh, a special closing attorney for the town, spent a lot of time and effort, a lot of money. Uh, we went to the closing, we signed all the documents, we didn't execute the documents, we signed them all, we were, the, the, of course, the. But if, once the thirty-four million was funded in the closing, um, we would transfer title of the property. On, uh, by the Knights of Columbus property to the Berlin Housing Authority, separate entity, obviously connected to the town, but their own entity. So at the closing, as everything is, uh, executed, um. As in any closing for real estate. The thirty-four million does not show up, okay? So. The explanation was that there was a problem with the wire transfer, okay, which is possible, um. So we waited. You know, we, we, everything stayed as it was executed, but not, you know, we didn't close on the deal, obviously, because we didn't have the money. So we waited, uh, well, it's December now, we're still waiting, but, um, so we, we never, uh, got any, um. Information on where the wire transfer went. It, it certainly didn't come to the town, but, and it didn't, they weren't gonna get thirty-four million, they were gonna get access to an account to build this property. It didn't go to the housing authority, so. Housing authority was represented by, uh. You know, attorneys out of Hartford as well, very respectable firm, never heard any answer on what happened with Wells Fargo. It was coming from Wells Fargo. Wells Fargo Trust was gonna fund it. So. We never saw that and then. The other answer I got about a month after that was that Wells Fargo decided not to fund the deal. Um, again, no documentation was provided, uh, account manager Roche, I think had a name of someone at Wells Fargo, right, that you tried to contact. By phone and email. No answer. So we spent a lot of time, a lot of effort. We were on the brink of. Funding the senior housing for Berlin. Uh. Through the Berlin Housing Authority, transfer the title to them and they would start building it as of now. So it didn't happen. So, um. Here we are.[1777.64] Um, so I am going to ask tonight, I talked to him today briefly, if he's still, Chief, Chief McNally, I think he's still on. Uh, we're going to have to have the Berlin Police Department, I'm sorry, we, we need answers, I mean, there are no answers from the housing authority, no money changed hands, but. We had a deal. And we spent, we hired an attorney, we spent a lot of money getting this ready, so I want Berlin P D. To get statements. I want to know who in Wells Fargo set up this financing, there was letters from Wells Fargo, we had, right, in the record, I believe, I'm Jeff's on here, Jeff would know. And, uh. It's December, we had no answers, we had no housing, it was supposed to, the Knights of Columbus building was going to be knocked down, I think, the week after the closing. Um, unacceptable from our housing authority, I don't even know what to say about it. So. When I ask Chief McNally, we'll meet with him, and, um. He's going to have to. Get some information for us, we need to have an answer on what happened here, what did happen, was there a deal with Wells Fargo, I don't know, nobody knows. And. The chairman of, uh, the Berlin Housing Authority, Mr. Mijorski, told me he was going to get the FBI to investigate. Uh, I, um, haven't seen that, I haven't seen too many FBI agents around, I try to recognize them from my part of the life, but I didn't see any federal agents roaming around Berlin doing an investigation, maybe they're here, maybe they're undercover. I doubt it, but, um. That's not appropriate, because you start with the local authorities first, and then you go to the state, and then maybe go to the feds, if, if it gets that far, I don't believe it's going to go that far, obviously, but we just need an answer. We, we spent a lot of time. The closing attorney we hired has done real estate closing for thirty years, he said he's never seen anything like it in thirty years, that's enough for me. Um, never mind the whole circumstances of where we've been, so. We're going to start with that, just to look into that, that is over, the housing authority is over, as far as I'm concerned, um, but. What I want to do with the new council here, next time, because we got a lot more to do tonight, is talk about where we go next, and I think where we go next is the town is going to have to handle it. The town is going to have to take it into their hands, we'll put an RFP out, look for some developers that, that can fit the bill, what we're looking to do. And since I have some more discussions going on.
Yeah, ju- just interject, I mean.
Yeah.
Uh, council at previous meeting when they. We already, um, approved for us to move forward and hire F H I, the consultant, who worked with the overall housing plan.
Yeah.
And the panel, I'm sure he's in there, they hired them, engaged them, worked on the text. Uh, but, uh, and then posted.
Yeah.
I'm going to have it for thirty-five days, planning and joining will take it out. I am, um, expecting that we will be able to get an out of tree out by, you know.
Excellent.
And, so, so we're, we're moving on.
That's wonderful. No, no, I know. So we're, we have to change some of the planning zoning, which we're already moving on, and, because we, we have it in the, in the regs. We'll just pick it down, and then we can move forward with it. But we are moving on that, and we're going to move on that, but it still leaves many unanswered questions on the time that we wasted and the money we have spent. And I just. You know, thirty-four million dollars got transferred somewhere, nobody knows where, that's. That's, you know, that's very odd, and, uh, we have to find that out, so that, that would be that other side of it, but the town's going to move forward, but I think we'll have a little bit more of a discussion. You know, next time, when we have a little more time, and, and get everybody involved in it, so, just so you know, that's kind of where we're at, but we're moving forward to get that done. Because. Our seniors deserve it, and we've had that property sitting there. For ten years, and this, the other organization just can't get it done. Did not get it done, so thank you for that. Very frustrating for all of us here, right, on the council, here, all of us that have been on here, um. Push on the aging every year, it's a gift, uh. Frustrating, you can feel it for me, and I'm not happy, and nobody's happy in town with it, so we're going to fix it. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, agenda item number nine, no, this is a good one.
We need a good one, yeah.
Non-b屬的acquisition of fiscal twenty-three municipal revenue sharing grant. This is the public act twenty-two dash one-one-eight that was created, um. You distribute municipal sharing home, you can be fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. In June of this, I'm sorry, in January of this year, we received a, upon the O P M. We might say at that time, they did not expect any additional revenue funds that would not be distributed. But they closed the books in June, and in September, and in October, we actually received a payment of five hundred and nine thousand dollars from the state. So. The money to the bank, and what they are asking the council is to. Okay. To appropriate the five hundred and nine thousand to, uh, purchase a vehicle. So currently, we've been through the planning process for this period of twenty-twenty-five, and I hope Mr. Hyman can give you a little bit more detail on this. Uh, vehicles are in, uh, yeah, who, I was great, because I was serving some of the years, as you know. The P D, uh, for ten years, when they, they tied that vehicle this, and the door of the town, which I think by itself is not a good strategy, uh, they're beating out a lot of miles on it. Uh, and now with the, trying to increase the P D force there, uh, we. Keeping holding on to those vehicles for longer, so you know, that pipeline is pretty much dry. We, um, you know, Jim can talk to how often these vehicles will hit the shop during. All the problems we have with given parts and a lot of time we spend on labor and materials. So, um. Hence, we are asking the town council to consider that, to say, um, this is not something that will be perfected or. Or can be taken off some of the, come on, from the next year's budget, and it won't affect the. X space of Berlin or the New York, so. Something to add, Jim, we can all get a good clue to this, you know, one who works better than us, then, uh, Jim.
So one piece that, that Roche didn't mention, uh. When I put together the capital for the last few years. And with the capital meeting, I just, I, I told them that people vehicles that you need to replace, but there's no sense in giving me funding at this time. And the reason why there was no sense in giving me funding at this time was because of the new car market. New car being constructed, new car not having chips or other components on them, they would never be delivered, so we would be funding money. Um, for vehicles that were one to two budgets out. And the money could be very well used somewhere else within the budget, so that was, that was the first thing. So when it came time this, this year, with the capital together, I put together the thirteen vehicles that I thought were needed, and then I broke them down with a high priority, priority one and a priority two. Priority one were vehicles that, at this point. Um, through. Possible living, um. Calculations through a computer system that we use. Maintenance repairs, what we're seeing on them, I identified seven vehicles that needed to be replaced. So those seven vehicles are the ones that are on your piece of paper for number one, um. And they include primarily tradesmen vehicles, so they're dump trucks, pickup trucks. Utility vans, things like that, that are the trade men vehicles that are the ones that are out in the. On the street, maintaining your buildings, your grounds, your streets, all that stuff. There are two administrative vehicles in there, um, that you see in there, there are smaller cars. Um, to replace some of the aging vehicles located in. That I have people running around with vehicles that are. Um, sixteen, seventeen years old, well over a hundred thousand miles on them, and they're, they're, they're done. So the, out of the, out of the seven that I'm requesting, or that are requested be top, uh, top tier, number one tier. The average vehicle age, average vehicle is two thousand seven, out of all of them. It's sixteen years old. The average mileage on those is a hundred and seventeen thousand miles, that's the average one. Yes, we can keep anything running, but there becomes a time when it's not feasible. Not financial wise anymore, we keep these things running. The bigger trucks, or the trucks that we're looking for, the dump trucks and pickup truck. Primarily, um. Not primarily, they're used for snow removal in the winter. And with that being, that snow removal is very tough on the vehicle. Snow removal in, in our area means that we put a lot of salt in them. We put a lot of salt around, they're, they're just rotting out their bone part. So that's, that's my whole scoop on it. Those are seven vehicles that we need to replace. And, and I'll, I'll warn you that. There will be more coming, the average age of our fleet is, is, uh, thirteen-year-old fleet. That's the average age of our vehicles, our thirteen-year-old fleet. Now, replacing some of these, yeah, it's going to bring it up a little bit, or that's, or it's going to bring it down a little bit, but it's still, we have an agent, we have an agent fleet that, you know, we were asked. Because things weren't funded, we were asked to see if we can make them go as far as we can go. Well, we're getting to the point where now some of them need to go. Away. Some of them need to go away, so that's where we are. Okay. Good, Box, what do you think about this?
Jim, how? How, uh, delivery on new vehicles, any better?
Great now. Uh, pickup truck I ordered in September, we're outfitting at the garage right now, and I expected that to be a year out. It came in within two months. What happened? What do we think? Well. What do we think? I can tell you what I think. You know, you're. What do I think, the downturn in the new vehicle market is killing manufacturers. Currently, they can't sell the product that they have on the, on the ground. And they're not getting the orders. Uh, so you're going to see some of these big manufacturers that were, um. Helped out before, they're going to be helped out again. Uh, I can tell you that, we'll just look at Ford. Ford, I came to you in September, when I ordered that pickup truck, I said I need to order that pickup truck before the order bank blows, because they only build out, we'll say they only build out two thousand vehicles. The order bank is still open, because they had, they don't have the orders. Yeah, so. So, but it, it's great for us, because now, if I even look at the senior van that we just, and I said was the, a model two thousand twenty-five. We already have a VIN number on that, so that chassis is going to manufacturing, which means that I, I'm not going to. Jinx it any, but it's going to come in earlier than we anticipated. And it's because there are no orders out there. And why do you think, why do you think there's no orders? Because nobody's paying the price, um, and nobody wants to pay the interest rates, and, and they're. Yeah, nobody. At the dealers. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we able to trade in any of these old vehicles for these newer ones, or they're not, they're in that bad of shape or?
They, they will. Well, we will auction them, and currently, we, we've begun auctioning the vehicles that, the older vehicles that we have now, but they're, they're shot. I mean, you're going to get a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars more than that, so.
That's for being a regional center, help us.
They are helping us. They are helping us, um, they're the ones that got us, they're the ones that bid the, uh, uh, chassis for the bus, and they will be probably the ones that. Order on these. That's right. We're waiting, we're waiting for that D A S contract to come out, the ones that D A S vehicle contract comes out. And we get stopped. That's not, they're not open yet, the facility, their facility is almost up, I guess. It's almost up. It's almost, yeah. That's great, that's great for Berlin. Casca, Casca just helped us out with the police creatures that are coming up. Oh, nice. Yeah, great, thank you, Jim, we appreciate that. Okay, so where are we at here, Ron?
Okay, at this point, and, uh, if you, uh. Money that's been done for the rest of the.
Yeah, we're going to cover that.
Good, we are.
How many?
Meeting.
How many?
We'll figure the money.
Oh, January second.
January second, or the first meeting, generally, I mean, we do this.
Oh, yeah, we gotta do that, yeah. Well. We'll get there. I think, tonight, alright, so, uh, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll go and take a motion, I'll just go to town meeting anyway.
Move to call a town meeting on January second, twenty twenty-four, at six forty-five P M, approve a non-budgeted appropriation of. Five hundred and nine thousand dollars on municipal revenue sharing account, with your vehicle reserve account. Both be the journal time.
Thank you, second on that.
I will second that.
Thank you, any other comments or questions? I mean, none all's in favor?
None.
Close, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I'm not calling it. We see, we see plenty more here, we're getting, we're trying to get there, alright.
Then I don't know the ten, because we're doing repairs. I'm trying to control. I'll have a break, and then talk about it.
Ray, Mr. Ray.
I'm saving my pipes for next month. You can set aside for yourself.
Oh, good, we like shall and tell. Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure we really want to see the pipes. He's gonna be pretty good. Oh, good.
I just want to congratulate the newly appointed, uh, real. Soften you up.
To you, fifty years in the biz, in the business?
Yep.
State, I have time for the state.
Forty years of the state, and a little over ten years with.
Yeah, we appreciate you being here and your experience.
If you're in elementary school.
Yeah, so, yeah, are you going to talk about that? Sure, let's, let's, let's get the awards, we want to see the award. That's great. Good news. Uh, we'll give you a little story about how this happened, you can just hit like this and I'll pick up at the end.
Oh, wow.
Put the trout in the jar.
Oh, it's not a pen, it's a.
Wow. Look at that.
Almost every year, I attend a water quality technology conference in, uh, Norwich, Connecticut. Uh, three years in a row, uh, two years in a row, Danbury won, this is a water tasting test, uh, was held, and the Danbury won. Most of the utilities or larger utilities, we're talking about, they're still M D C, we beat out M D C this year.
Nice.
I was happy, happy to do that. Actually, yeah. It's so.
Yeah, we should have, we should have passed the cup, but we had tasting water.
Particularly from our wealth deal, because we do purchase water, as you know, from, uh, New Britain, so I wanted to make it very clear that, so we're the groundwater.
This is from the well.
And we're the smallest familiar, and we want it, and the shock to receive this, and so we're pretty happy. Anyway, going back to the item.
Yeah.
You struck it up now.
Yeah, yeah, whatever you want.
Annually, in, or by annually, in this case annually, we'd be going to, uh, uh, contractors, do our pump stations. To clean out our, our sewer lines and so forth, we went out to bid in early December, only got one bidder. And I looked up his references, and I, I knew we were off, off track because he was certified in traffic control, but wasn't going to help with the insurance. So anyway, his references didn't check out, so we're going out to bid, and, uh, our current contractor is Dr. Gray Doctor, and he's, uh, said that he would extend his contract for another month or so. Cover us, and then we, we hopefully have come back in January, hopefully, if we get a bid again, uh, for January, they have a contractor coming back home.
Okay, so, uh. Go ahead, take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to extend the agreement for a contract number. Two zero two two nine ten, to T D Pairs or Minor Emergency Sewer Service. Doing these pump stations through February first, twenty twenty-four, for service use by water control and other departments from the town.
Thank you, second on that.
I will second that.
Thank you very much, uh. Thank you, Ray, all's in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ray, and congratulations again, you got fifty years, your trophy, what else can we congratulate on?
Does not return it.
Right, yeah, yeah, we don't want you to go anywhere.
You're going to find this funny, because when I joined the A W W A, I was on the national regional, uh, committees.
Yeah.
And I, I can't, I can't regionalize the two systems we had in Berlin.
Unique about Berlin, yes, many different places.
Thank you, agenda number, yes, is a, uh, convention, we were just talking about, there is, so it's a contract for. Guide rate of repair. And my problem is taking from the, like, in. Being breathing, um, the state contract expired in the end of October, uh, we've had very good luck moving into unified contract with guardrails, uh, which is. And then the state actually extended it through April thirtieth, so if you need to do any guardrail work, I'd like to get that extended through you, your permission to use that state contract. Until it expires in April thirtieth, and that allows you to, you know, meet either this one or this one.
Okay, makes sense.
Okay, makes sense.
At the state DAS contract. Probably be sorry for me, like what's good between a guardrail and.
I like guardrails, but they, I guess the technical term is guide rails, because they guide you back into the, you know, the traveling. That's the, that's the. Might stop right where you're at. Okay, any other questions? If not, we're going to take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to extend the use of the state DAS unit price contract number one eight P S. Zero one four seven to purchase guide rail repair installation services through April thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Where its later date is further extended by the state. Most thought effective and qualified.
Second.
I'll second that.
Very much. Any other comments or questions? There are none, all's in favor? Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
The next one is to uh. Try the board in the first possible gap. Jim's been working on this.
Jim, welcome back.
Not all at the same time.
So tomorrow, uh, Prague opens bid up. We're in the bid for seventy-eight thousand gallons of gasoline. The current is looking at it before it came up here tonight. Barrel W T I, um, barrel crude oils at seven sixty-eight dollars. That's great. Use for our, our average price, just taking the average price surrounding gas station around. Is around two dollars eighty-eight cents. Is uh. Over forty cents less than what we're currently paying. And so when we take the state taxes out of that, we should be somewhere around. Two sixty to forty, which would be great. Um, so before. Looking at all that with the way that Prague bid opens tomorrow, the meeting being today, I wanted to get this on the agenda so that we can. Award a contract before any other fluctuation in the market. Uh, so once we get those those bids back tomorrow or the next day. I'll sit down, administration will pick a vendor and award the contract for seventy-eight thousand five hundred gallon gasoline. With your approval.
Great, thank you, Jim. That's good news. We did see it at the pump. We can see the prices going down. Um, any questions for Jim? None, we're going to take a motion.
And we will to authorize the warning the twenty twenty four gasoline contract against the entire capital region council of governments. Through the selected bidder for seventy-eight thousand five hundred gallons of gasoline.
Second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? None, all's in favor?
Good night, number thirteen is to approve the purchase of four police vehicles from Tampa forward. There we go, so.
I, we had three police vehicles surplus. We had one police vehicle given us by the state grant. So we need to move on those. The lease, the the next lease order bank opens in February. And I'll go to the two thousand twenty-five. Now, with the latest things that happen in the market, we could get them a little earlier. But with that being said, I went out and started looking for some vehicles, um, and I found four. Two are coming out of another town in the state that canceled them because they decided they were wanting to buy their own search pickup trucks. Or now build a pickup truck, a suit pickup truck. So they went that way, which is a change.
Interesting.
You know, and I don't know, you know, the whole thing behind why they did that. And another one canceled their orders. Because of the extended delivery time. Those, I mean, they're a little different for us because those are two hybrid cars. So talk to the deputy chief and he talked to the chief and the rest of the officers and they'd be willing to try that. So two are going to be hybrid vehicles, um. Regeneration vehicles, which means that they charge the batteries as you break. Not being able to plug them in at night. So they charge the batteries as as you break. The battery is primary use for cutting down on idle times. Idle time is a huge problem with these vehicles. So we possibly could be starting heading down the direction, which would be great for the town. Um, and you just awarded seventy-eight thousand gallons of gasoline. Maybe we can cut some of that down, which would be great for the town too. So with these vehicles, these vehicles are being built in December. Um, so we should have those in the next, I'll say, month or so. And then we can get them out of it. And all off the state contract price.
So. So they don't plug in these hybrids?
So.
So how do they, so they charge themselves?
So they charge themselves. They have a gasoline engine. They have the same engine in them that is in the other vehicle. Um, but as you break, breaks also have a generator on. There recharges the batteries. So that when the vehicle is at idle, it's like. The engine shuts off, you start draining off the gas.
Okay, any other questions for Jim? I'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of four police vehicles in Tulsa for utilizing state of Connecticut Department Administrative Services contract. Number one nine P S X zero one six one. The amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Thank you, second. Any other questions? There are none, all was in favor? So moved.
Good night, number fourteen.
Still here.
Uh, this is approved for purchase of bigger boom, both side wall system.
So we have a two thousand six John Deere tractor with an Alamo, Alamo, um, guardrail or boom mower on it. It's the mower that you see along the sides of the road, cut back brush, knocking it down. Um. The Alamo system was put on that when it was brand new in two thousand six. Um, so it's quite a many years old. This year coming in for some routine maintenance, the mechanic noticed during inspection that there was some cracks in the main frames for the boom itself. And he said, hold it on. Now the boom's gone through some major holes already as far as the pivot point, which is made plain. And and the head, which is the lower head. Um, and they're up, they need to be replaced. So it's in the capital for next year to replace it for seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, when I went to get the prices to do the capital stuff. I called up Alamo because go back to manufacturers that came down, they looked at it, they says, uh. Uh, we don't manufacture anything for this tractor anymore. So you're gonna have to buy a new tractor. So I said, all right, what's the price of the tractor? In fact, with a budget price of two hundred fifty-two thousand dollars.
I.
Gold plated. So when I was out, it's a couple of different vendors and a couple of different shows, I noticed that there was this other manufacturer out there, Tiger. Um, did a little research, they got around for a while. So I contacted them. I said, what do you think? Came down, he looked at everything, he said. So he made some phone calls. He says, we still have all the jigs to make that stuff, make that brand. He says it's gonna take a little time because they have to break down and change the jigs out. Um, he says, but. I'll get your price on. So he came back with price to replace the undercarriage or the pivot point, the boom, the head. Hydraulics and everything. And uh, I said, wow, I said, that'll save me a lot of work this winter trying to tear this thing down, makes. Clean it up, get it back going for one more year because what I was gonna place next year's castle anyway. So I actually, I sent it out and I said, you know, it'd be nice to get this done. Save us a little bit of work. And they found the money and I'm here tonight, I want to award that contract and uh. Have this unit ready to go for next season.
Correct. Okay. Questions for Jim? Take a motion.
Move to approve the purchase of a Tiger Boom mower system. Replace our current Alamo that's been utilized in first world state contract. Number zero seven zero eight two one dash P G R from equipment specialists of East Hartford, Connecticut. Certain amount not to exceed eighty thousand seven hundred and eighty-five.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions? There are none, all's in favor? Opposed? All right, so move.
Good night, number fifteen, is purchase of five tire, professional protective equipment on C N S challenges.
So this is uh, my other hat on now. This is the. This is the protective clothing, generally the pant and the coat. Um, it is with the vendor that we've been with now for five years. We usually stay with a vendor for ten years. So they'll start a committee. Somewhere around the eighth year, we're testing like we did to get this vendor and the vendor beforehand. And then they'll select the best, best piece of clothing out there. So what we're doing is we're taking majority of this money and we're just replacing the pants, folks. Now, with that being said, there's new guidelines out in the state in which we're trying to follow. Uh, for us to jump into it and follow it right away, it would cost us in excess of quarter million dollars. So what we're trying to do, and and the problem with that is. Much like we saw with the fire trucks that were all purchased in two thousand two, we have to replace them all at the same time. And the problem is, is that this gear has a ten-year lifespan. So we probably won't see it, but somebody down the road will have to replace all this gear at the same time. So what we're trying to do, we're trying to replace that. On a yearly basis, so that it's staged out, it doesn't hurt the budget that much. So this is actually, this is the same gear we were wearing before and we're just doing. Yearly purchase of it.
Thank you. Any questions for Jim? So, no questions, do I take a motion, Charles?
Move to approve the purchase of Lion's Party Department Protective Clothing. On C N F specialty, the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars utilizing. N B P of National Purchasing Partner Contract Number. He has six zero zero.
Uh, any other questions? Uh, if not, we'll go ahead and mark and all's in favor? Thank you, Jim. Thank you. Very quick.
Thank you, Ivan.
Ah, yes, Mr. Ivan.
First punish the authorization of the appropriate including.
Knee.
Knee, knee replacement. Yeah, we have three people at three different companies. Hopefully she had this.
Good way to cut them, cut the clock, we can wreck to them.
Yeah, there you go. You had to make it this point. By the way, so sorry, folks, you know, for our new members to. Just, you know, we didn't really have a substantive meeting and for the audience to have substantive meeting in November because of the election. And one meeting in December means this meeting. So usually it's not this bad as far as the the big agenda.
I just thought you were trying to bring my spirit.
A lot of saving and taking, a lot of saving. Sorry about this, but it it does happen. Yeah. Thank you. You might be doing that, but we're still here. But we're doing it.
Received a grant in in six thousand six hundred twenty-three dollars from the economic redevelopment, their office of events. So essentially looking to uh appropriate this uh with the public planning approval order finance. Then using money for the arts.
Any questions for Mr. Chris? No, we're good.
Well, I will, I will share credit with Kim McNally's library ration together on this. It's a great things last year and it made more sense to. Use them in their knowledge, especially because their facility is tremendous to be able to do things and it just, it was, it was a perfect match.
That's great.
Arts, culture, tourism, I hope that it all fits and it's wonderful to see that we put a word in this.
They bought this list, we did fairly good, Jim. Um, so if there's other questions, do I take a motion, Charles?
Move to approve a $6,623. For forty arts grant, it's a forty arts grant. Ending approval by the board plan.
Second. Any other kind of question? There are none, all's in favor? Opposed? So move.
Thank you. So the number seventeen is, the money has grown this year. It'll be, it'll be good to to enlarge a group, give some input on how. Even move forward with different ideas. And Chris and Kim, they have some ideas, but again, we want to solicit your input as well from the council as to if you have any idea of them. What's the best way to do this? I think it'll be very positive for the. You know, we've got all of them last year asked a little bit more, we've got three times as much than we asked. Wonderful. So hopefully can grow this. It's something much needed.
Yeah, it's just essentially, yes, we are to create the ad hoc. Arts and Culture Committee. Um, essentially this body will kind of help us decide that the best way to go about that. Really get a lot of input on. I think maybe combinations of school, arts, and one of the things that um. Mr. McNally had mentioned was potentially, um, there's a middle school teacher by the name of Dave Holland. Who is very involved with students. And I know one of the things that we really would love to do this time of year is to do more with schools. Um, the other is actually, and not the same, some part of this, but. We have two different organizations that do work with children and families that have autism. So getting both Prism Academy and somewhere from the spectrum, both involves in the arts in some way. Because that's a part of the population that is. I wouldn't say is hidden, but now that these two organizations are are so out there doing such great work to get the children and others with autism.
Right. Sounds good. I guess that.
At the risk of sounding like the last voice go, shouldn't we have done this before we applied for the grant? I was pretty embarrassed to read online that we applied for a grant saying we had an arts and cultural committee when we didn't.
Yes, that was my mistake. I should have come to this body to ask to apply for the grant. We did not, and that was my mistake.
So what's the timeline as far as giving this committee now established?
It is up to this body. I did not have a timeframe particularly in mind. Myself, but I mean, the sooner we get it going, the sooner that um, this McNally and I can work with them on trying to. Work with some of the money.
I would think so, not the holidays. Yeah. So. Who would want to decide our committee, obviously before we ask them, we'll come back to you with the names and the people, like Chris. This way, keep it constantly informed with your direction, anything else you want to add.
I think that's a great idea. Chris, I know that you've been working to establish. An arts entity, if you will, we've talked about it for a couple of years now. Uh, and the formalization of it now is is great and I appreciate everything in the efforts that you've made, like I said. We've talked about this in the past over the past couple of years. This is great. And I thank you.
Yeah, it's probably worth it. We got a larger sum of money than.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if it came back at the two thousand originally asked for, it might not have been a big social media. You know, but I think it's great that we got more than we asked for. Um. You know, I I do see, you know, I'm thinking of of having a committee of of seven residents and plus. Um, the only piece of advice I'd put at this point is consider the number, maybe sometimes smaller is 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 better. Um, to be more nimble to get things done. Um. You know, that being said, I I think input from, you know, from the community, from the citizens, as as far as ideas and things like that, I think it's great. But as far as a work, I would just, I would just take a look at that number.
Great. Any comments or?
Are there any limitations in the grant as to how quickly we have to decide what to do with money?
The, the date, what we need to decide quickly we need to do. Actually have. See here, the funding period is October first, twenty twenty three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So essentially we need to have the money expended by September very early in twenty twenty four. So there is no date upon which you have to start spending it, but that's the.
But that's our timeline.
And they'll probably look for a form. Or.
Yes.
In terms of how you expect the monies and what you do, you know, for your projects.
Yes.
At the end of that time. That's great. Yeah, I do too. Thank you.
Thanks. So if we're good, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Please authorize the art and culture committee to accept the twenty twenty three supporting art grant. With the.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And I would give compliments. There are none, all in favor?
Hi.
Oh. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one, please take in this one, Chris.
I think we have.
That move was up. Town manager, if they go contact a labor, which will. Or additional, or helping services or by steel or. I got it. Jim, I'll tell you what's here.
Okay. So our favorite engineer control project at fifty five Steel Boulevard. I think we've talked a little bit about the fact that, you know, we did, we started the engineer control project, we excavated the foundations. And then in that process, we identified that there was unsuitable materials. Below grade. So that Newport had to do some redesign of their project. And we've gone back and forth on that a little bit and we've used additional services for. Of Larrero to do redesign, you know, to do change orders, to analyze. Different plans and develop, you know. The modifications to our plans, the engineer control plans that fit their building plans. So. We've had additional costs there. I would say that. We've been working with, with B and W. They've had concerns about delays. We're trying to keep them on board. But basically, the, the, moving forward for the project. The plan is we're going to actually. Reactivate B and W in the next, you know, between now and, you know. The end of the year, beginning of January. And they're going to do some excavation and some, and, and place the. Crush material that's on the site. In a way that would set up some tracking pans so that Newport. Can install geo peers. In the spring to support the building, you know, and overcome these issues with the unsuitable materials. And then geo peers would be installed and then the idea is that. Hopefully B and W will come back in July to, to finish the job. But again, there's been a lot of additional work with redesign and Newport had to. Also lift the building up eight inches because we didn't want to. We didn't want to move material offsite because it's contaminated material. We want to keep everything on site under the. Under the cap. So again, this is just to. Bring, authorize some additional services to Larrero in recognition of everything that's going on with the project.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. We appreciate that this project is. The pollution on the area there is just endless, but we are certainly working to. Get it ultimately finished, so.
And they're thankful for the grant.
Oh, we are very thankful for the brownfield grant. Because it would have cost the town a fortune for this, but. Which is a piece of property for our new members that we acquired through a foreclosure and of course it was contaminated and. The rest is history. A very, very long, long process to make sure, you know. Stays that we clean it up and it stays that way. Okay, questions, folks? And, and again, for the new folks, I apologize to a lot of the stuff we've seen many, many times. So. Little bit of a, you know, we run through it fairly quickly, but we'll catch up to it and. You know, have some more background on that. So no further questions, go ahead and take a motion now, Charlie.
Move to waive the bidding process and authorize town manager to enter a contract amendment for Larrero Engineering. The five thousand dollar. The general control service in the range of different types of over. With the cost. To charge principal brownfield grant account. To invest in total time.
Second on that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
Wait, thank you. Item number twenty is to extend the forbearance agreement that we had with when it got sand and stone and up here with the LLC. Do you want to do a quick recap, Jim, on this? This is also.
Yes.
You know, yes.
And we've. This has been ongoing for a while that the. Connecticut Sand and Stone Property for the, the new council members is located. Between the Amtrak. Line. And to the west toward the Britton Road to the rail freight line. I guess it's now owned by CSX. And the area. The, the, this property was tax delinquent. The area has some environmental contamination, also has, you know, development challenges. The. Real property. Acquisition LLC is an affiliate of Clean Earth. They have a contract to buy the property. The town has gotten. Grants to do environmental investigations of the property. We've been kind of working together for several years. And then the idea is that they're going to beneficially reuse soil that they treat. And create a small industrial park on, on the developable portion of the property. In the meets, so our arrangement, this forbearance agreement. Provides that they continue to pay. They continue to pay toward back taxes. Currently, they pay forty five hundred dollars a month toward back taxes. And, and we agree not to foreclose on the property while they're working on the project. Now, this project. Requires. Participation in a new state program, which is a pilot for reuse of this type of soil. And the state, we've been waiting for the state to come out with the guidelines. Actually, they just came out with the guidelines in November. After many months, so we're happy that we're starting to see movement on that. So we're hopefully, we're hoping that next year we'll see. The movement, but they need, they need another twelve months, twelve month extension because of the agreement. Previous agreement expired November thirtieth, so we want an extension to November thirtieth. Of twenty twenty four.
All right, thank you. Okay, any questions on this? Again, it's an ongoing issue we've been dealing with, so. Extension. I'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to enter into an extension. To the forbearance and environmental grant related. Agreement with real property acquisition. Kind of against standing stock corporation. To extend the forbearance period to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Subject to review and approval of corporation council.
That second on that.
I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions? There are none, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? So move.
Great, thank you. Item number twenty one. To do with. Getting authorization from the council to move forward with. Over at Home Park yet. As you recall, they looked at various options, including. Selling this unit, some compensation from the council. And we had some concerns about people buying it and then going around and selling it and. So I think there's some. Difficulty. Unable to relocate the people. So one of the proposals discussed with the council is to. Run a private deep restrict these units. We're getting close to the ten percent requirement of the thirty G. And we can deep restrict these units that'll help us to get there sooner. And town owns this property and we just run down the paths. To the over unit orders. Now they're over, and most of them have been there for many years since the. You know, art was created in the nineties. Currently, there are two units that have, that are vacant. So I've been working with Jim and then also Jenny Potola. And we can. Deep restrict those units now. There's no one there. So the next time somebody makes an application, we'll. We'll. Send them through a process to make sure that they meet the requirements of, you know, the income, which is below the. Eighty percent of area median income. But with those other fourteen units, but the. Our proposal that we do is when you. Put in an incentive to allow us to be restricted. Because. When you deep restrict the property, it, it minimizes their chances of selling the unit at a higher price. Because it has to qualify for the making. Or eighty percent of the area median income. What we thought might be. Good, rather than trying to come up with the money now is in beginning of July. Offer six months rent free. That's three hundred and fifty bucks. Four months, I'm sorry, four months of rent free. And they get paid in the budget process. And then get all those units deep restricted. And the cost will be about nineteen six hundred that we would not. Was it for that particular year, twist, stretch, by the one time. And, and then. Have them all go through the application process. We believe that a lot of them will immediately qualify. But let's say there are some folks who are above the eighty percent median income, we are asking them, them. Move them out, or they, they will stay there and the next time they sell the unit. They'll go through the income qualification and do. Get the people and not vote. So that is a proposal, but they are asking for funding in this direction. Time for the budget in just thirty twenty five, I'll reduce the anticipated income from the whole lot of open it's by nineteen six.
Questions? Okay. Makes sense.
Who does the income verification for the.
Yeah.
For.
We will be hiring someone to do that and then because anyhow we don't have the expertise and it's a bit complicated. But there are folks that you can pay for a fee. And make sure they go through the whole process and. Certification of the town. Doug Troy used to. Do that in some instances, but he retired. And it does not want to stay with things to be either.
Does whole partnerships still are?
I don't know.
They had affordable housing. Development and they ran the income verification.
They're from all same though. They're called whole.
Partnership.
I mean, we'll probably talk to multiple people to make sure. There's someone in the world and I don't know. And there are people who do. Yes. We can restrict. Had we owned real estate. Can we restrict the unit? We don't own the unit, but. That is correct, but we. What, what we. Since they're going to live there. They can be counted towards the. Affordable housing units.
Like I'm not, but the mobile home. Real estate regulations are different than the regular standing structure. It's almost like a motor vehicle.
So it's income based, Jennifer Capola is. Working with Jim to get something in writing from the Department of Housing. That when you do this, it is actually going to come. What you don't want to do is to do this and.
Have it not count.
Have that count. So in your summary, you say that these are the steps we are going to take. And make sure that it's, you know, all of the people say before we go ahead and deep restrict anything. And we're beginning to reach out to the Department of Housing already. And our first corporation council will sign off on the ball.
Okay, so any questions, any questions? Okay, Charlie, don't take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to phase in. Permanent date restriction of units of the semi mobile home park. Meet requirement of section. Eight dash thirty G. Of the Connecticut General Staff, but that vacant units and only the occupied units. Except and offered our one month rental payment. In consideration of. Placement of a need restriction on your unit. When we see restricted now, the need restrictions will be placed in the future on any unit that. Supposedly become vacant or agrees to accept mental improvement or place more of the need restrictions on the unit. Obviously. Consultation and. Connecticut Department. Housing and review and approval of.
Thank you. Any other questions, Connor? And none, all in favor? Opposed? So move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Twenty three, good, thank you for your help with that too.
Thanks, Jim.
Item number three is. B and A.
Sorry. I'm sorry it's so late.
The, the mayor had asked after the unfortunate incident that happened in. Berlantec, just sort of talk about what options we have. We have some ideas, but. She can talk about what is it now and some ideas she.
But just to give a little background, I don't know if everybody in town can close aware that there was a home care nurse in the romantic that was murdered during a visit. For hours. So. There is unfortunately just an inherent danger or risk in home care. We don't have control of the environment. We're going some things on the startup here. Somewhere new. We don't know the individual. We don't know who's in the home. We don't know if they. So it is part of our assessment at the time of the referral. Just to give a little. Further background, the type of home care that that nurse was doing is slightly different than what we do in our Berlin B and A. It was behavioral health. Psychiatric focus. Where she was going to give a medication to a patient who lived in transitional housing where there are other. Patients either coming out of psychiatric or substance abuse rehab or. Jail. So we don't do that type of home care, so the risk is slightly reduced, but obviously the risk is always just going to be there a little bit. We don't take behavioral health patients because we don't have nurses equipped with skills to manage behavioral health or medical focused. We don't accept patients who have an active substance abuse of any kind. And when the referral comes through, we do look at if. We think the area may be questionable, sometimes out of the Berlin community, we do go there. So we just look up. The address. Mostly speaking about New Britain. When I was in the field of home care, I worked in New Britain. So I know there's some great areas and there's some. Questionable area in New Britain. So we do look up the addresses and we have questions on safety. Of the address we have to find that at sometimes. We just didn't feel like the area was a safe spot that we wanted to send staff. But in addition to that. We've done this for a week. We have asked all the staff members to do. A checkout. So full time staff do a checkout at the end of the day. Once they're done with visits. Their day doesn't end at four o'clock with visits. It might end at one or it might end at three. We don't really know. They, they go home and they do documentation or follow up home calls, whatever they have to do. So. At the end of their day, they're now checking out with us, done with visits, going home. And so we can account for all those people and our per diems who don't. Work every day. They do a check in and let us know, I'm starting my visits and a checkout. At the end of the day that we know that they're done. So. It's been a really easy to implement. We have a secure messaging system that we use for communication all throughout the day. It's just one more message for them to each send. It wasn't a, not a big ass. They felt like that was a decent way. And then if we don't hear from them, if it's coming up on, you know, four o'clock and we haven't heard. We will give a phone call. If we were not able to reach them, we would then reach out to their emergency contact to initiate, you know, figuring out where are they, what happened. Luckily, everybody's just been able to send in their, their home. They finish their day and all that. And it's just need to really work and not be very inconvenient and it's something that can be implemented to all of our staff. I know the idea was brought to me for GPS for cars, which I'm not. Opposed to in any way, but it, it didn't capture all of our staff. So I had concerns that we wanted something that we could implement. To include everybody. So I don't know if the council has any questions or suggestions that are very good thoughts.
Is that a new? Step on that at that? Check it out there. Based upon what has occurred. So, yeah, go ahead.
So I have a question. You said that your regular staff. Has a checkout at the end of the day. Do they not have a check in in terms of when they're starting, but you do have your per diem?
Yeah, because we know that they're going to be working that day unless they have the day off and we send out a weekly staffing. Grids. Everybody would know that, you know. So everybody would know that, you know, one of the nurses was off on a particular day. I don't. Feel that they need to do the check-in because we know that they're working, so for the per diems that check in is because they don't work every single day. We wanna identify what days that we know that you're gonna be out and working, you're starting your visits.
You also mentioned that, uh, some can do the GPS, but others can't.
So there was a mention of putting, um, the GPS on the town cars and we only have five of our. Fifteen employees that that would be applicable for.
So is that because the other people use their own vehicles? Yes, so.
The, uh, all family employees, they are the only ones who need the town cars, but, uh, per diem.
Oh, so the per diem people would be the only people that were questioned because they don't use our vehicles.
Okay, we have ten per diem staff. They just would not be included in the GPS and I thought like we needed something that would identify their safety.
Certainly, you know, safety issues, I don't, I mean, to me it would be even, I would think that you'd like to know when they were going out.
Yeah, we certainly thought it was.
Coming back, just to, you know, so it's new and, and I know people don't necessarily like to do new stuff. But it's a safety of people, you know, employees and, and per diem people, um, you know, I think we need to take a look at everything.
It was just more about anticipating when they were working and, and hopefully they weren't working. So like, I know that those regular staff are working every day.
And so what are they doing? They text to you?
It's in our secure messaging, is that?
Okay, it's.
We have a secure messaging, yeah, it's like a text that would open our documentation system, it's just that.
It's not like you'd be asking unreasonable to, you know, what, we send them, we're going out now, you know, checking. And maybe even depending on how many visits they have a day, I'm leaving here, I'm coming, you know.
Yeah.
You know, so that you can at least track where they are. God forbid, MIA were.
Yeah, we do have the schedules, so we would know which locations they would, you know, we can anticipate that they're at. That was gonna, but kind of be my question. I'm a little worried about asking for each visit to check in, just. It would be. It would just be a lot of, uh, messages coming through and then tracking like each one. I would feel worried that we might.
I mean, it's a safety issue, I mean, clearly, I mean, they weren't even able to find that.
Well, I mean, the, the concern and, if you're looking at it from, you know, for the safety, as you know, what time they're filling out, you know, what, what time they should check back in. Well, let's say if they have an issue, let's say visit two, and that's at ten o'clock in the morning and you don't hear from them at four and you check in.
It's fixed out. Yeah, I'm typically referring before four o'clock, but.
I mean, that, that's just the concern, I mean, because I think it was the same thing with her. She went there earlier and nobody knew for a long time. Um, you know.
So you're up to that, you can also put on your phone, that would.
Well, I was gonna say, I know.
Like a GPS.
Nobody concerned with that, that the per diems don't have a town phone, so there's no way to enforce this, um, per diem staff. Because I wouldn't request them to point on their personal. I don't know.
I mean, is there a, a software or something that could they use, like I know when scheduling. I didn't like, we used to have, um, when I'd have staff that would go from different offices, they'd check out from one office, you know, like. I don't wanna say punch out or whatever, because it really wasn't punching out, but, you know, we had a. Kind of like a payroll system, but not exactly where, you know, okay, they, they left this office, now they're checking in, they got to this location. Um, I mean, it might be worth just looking to see if there's something like that, just a simple app.
Yeah, we simply could into, but we wanted something that we could initiate right away and try and, and it's a good.
It, it's a safety issue, you know, I think that we as a council would be worth it to make that. We need to do that to keep. It's safe.
Just let that be the.
He missed it. Taking attention, I'm making.
Doesn't wanna, I'll tell him what he spent, yeah. I would also like to throw the GPS on the town cars. They're, they're not, they're not expensive. So, yeah, I wouldn't be, wouldn't be, and I know it's not everybody, but I'm glad you have the other system for the per diem, I understand that, that's great.
Yeah, we just had concerns about like the GPS, like who would monitor that? Now we have two different systems.
Well, so, we're really.
It was just a little bit worried that it would be cumbersome and we was.
No, you don't need to monitor them, and what I'm saying, the, the, the easiest thing is if you had a question on where they were, it, it's just a web base. You just sign into the web base, you pick vehicle one through five and you'll just see where their route was during the day or where they ended out or they didn't leave that place. So you don't have to monitor it, but if you wanna see where they are and they haven't checked in, you could just go on, sign in. Put your code in, you know, your code, sign-on code, and you could just, it'll list all the vehicles and it'll show you the whole route for the day and it'll show you where they're at. How long they stayed there, how fast they drove, you know, but if you needed to. You don't need to monitor it every day, but it's another safety that you know where that, they're taking their car, they go to that house, we don't know who was in that house. Who knows what happens to their phone too, but since they have the town car. I would throw it in there, you plug it into the OBD four, it's pretty easy, that system that. I'm familiar with, it's not that expensive, but.
To put all kinds of parameters on the system, if the car is going place too long. It would, would.
It'll alert, you send it.
Or if it, if it went outside of prescribed circle of travel, because alert, you know, it could give you some good warning.
I'm sorry, do you have some ideas on the GPS or thoughts? Um, I don't know if you have time to look into it.
I didn't, didn't really have time to look into it, um. The systems that, that they're talking about don't need an onboard computer. Like the systems that are the police cars, they need onboard computer as they go through all different systems, but, um, they're, they're talking about the, you know, lead system. A GPS.
Yep.
That will track the cars no matter where they are. I think that, I don't know enough about them, but, um, probably wanna put something on the individual. And I don't know the parameters of legality and stuff like that, but if they had a, an air tag on. Be able to.
Find mine, yeah.
Find them all the time.
Yeah.
But.
Not sure about that, but.
Yeah, I don't.
That might, that might be a bit much, but. I mean, not the magnitude of that.
There, 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 there are things out there, yeah, yeah, I don't, yeah. The, the, you know, the car, obviously something happened to them, the car would be somewhere in the neighborhood, I, I would think, but you never know.
I mean, I did, the, the, the horror story with this poor lady was. That her family had to track her down.
Yeah.
With the pump, because no one even knew, I guess, with the VNA where she, you know, that she ended her day. So I'm glad you got what you instituted, that's a, you know, and that's a horrible scenario, but.
Do you have, do they have, to do their reports, do the nurses have like little pads or how do they do that? I, I'm sure it's not, you're, they're not writing reports, are they?
No, so we have a mix of different, depending on the, uh, staff members, so we do have our five full-time staff members. That have tablets, some of our per diems have tablets also and some have our laptop.
So they do have electronic equipment that belongs to us, right? So, I mean, can we not have something in those tracking them, right? I mean, they've gotta have them on, then I would think while they're visiting.
I mean, I get the, I mean, the town, folks have town phone, too, right?
Yeah, so the, um, those five individuals that drive the town car have the town cell phone and the, um, tablet. So three different, I guess, options that's possible, I think.
Yeah, this is just some things to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not. She. Questioning the work is really making sure that they're safe.
Yeah, they just, um, we discussed it in a staff meeting and they said, well. The concern for everybody was including all the staff, um, and not using something that would exclude them, so we didn't wanna specifically use. The GPS, um, someone did bring up like, oh, I have an app for my kids, but sometimes it shows like. They're in the ditch and they're not in the ditch, it's not always. But, um. Yeah, I guess that was just there, Eric was caring about that, nobody said no, that they wanted or didn't feel comfortable.
Yeah.
They just felt like, well, how is that, how does that help me, you know, how do, how does that tell you anything and who would watch that and how would they watch?
How does it tell you? You find their car instantly.
Well, they're, they said, you know, what if I'm not with the car, you know, it's.
Well, true, if they're parked in the driveway, like this lady's car was, we would find, we would know where the car is at if they never checked in at the end of the day, right? So, I mean, listen, if, if the, and I know they probably wouldn't want it, they don't want, they don't wanna be messing with their own car, I get it, I wouldn't either, but.
Personally, can't.
No, I mean, if they, if they wanted to put one on their car, if they feel safer, the per diem people, I don't, I don't think, it's not expensive at all. And it's not, you don't have to monitor it every day, it's just another device, uh. How you, yeah, it's just in case, just in case, and that's all it's about. So I would definitely look into, I can give you one that's, you know, a couple of Easy Go Track is one that actually I use for company vehicle. That we have, but it's, and it's very simple, I mean, it, you just plug it in and, and, and to the OBD. You know, so it's no, no big deal and, um, you can go at any time, you don't have to, you don't have to go on.
Okay.
It'll, it'll just show where they're at, if you've got to be, you don't find them, you know, they don't answer the phone and you're worried. Just in light of this, that's.
Just as an extra.
And it's not too expensive, whatever it is, that's fine, and, and if other people wanted it. If per diem wanted it, it's fine for them too, I don't know. Yeah.
I'll yield to Donna, but I believe the legislature is working on that.
Right now, oh, good for that.
Yeah, the Connecticut Home Care Association has been very active in finding out a lot of information.
Yeah.
Um, I did share with my staff, um, a tip sheet that they sent us on, you know, different. Tips on, uh, to how to improve your safety and they all know if you don't feel safe, don't go in.
Yep.
Um, if you don't feel safe in the visit, then leave. Uh, sometimes we've had issues of. Just personality issues, not maybe a safety thing, but just feeling like the relationship with the patient wasn't working with that particular person. Sometimes we swap out a different staff member and then the relationship's a little bit different and, and works out better, so. You know, we're, we're in key, close contact with them.
I think it's the scary thing is, right, like, I mean, I know that was a different scenario, the patients you don't, you know, necessarily handle that. You know, with those issues, but, you know, whatever housing, who knows who's in there, right, that day, I mean, maybe the patient might be there, but some other person. That you never met or they, you know, could be the, the problem, not, not the patient, I mean. Scary part.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Something like this because of, you know, a reaction to something that happened, chances are something will come to the floor, so.
Say that, but what had happened before we looked at that.
No, I know.
Yeah, you know.
Just don't think.
In the interest of.
Yes, we have.
So, we've got a lot of good ideas, discussion, yes. Put the plan together, put in GPS, everything.
Yeah.
Let us know.
So, thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, also.
Sorry, we're, we're sorry for ourselves with our. Okay, so, um, so, let, let's go to, I know we gotta do the calendar. Yeah. We look at the calendar, I guess. And, uh, the launch of finishing. Okay, okay, so what do we think about the calendar, folks? Do we look at this before the calendar? The committee, the committee, now. Yes.
So, the first meeting though, that just normally you have five, uh, few days.
Hmm.
January first is a holiday, second is the day after, sixth, Christmas and maybe it's a lot of folks, uh.
Around, around, yeah.
Spending time with family.
Yeah.
And, uh, we don't wanna just put a team page in and not accomplish anything. What I would add is that move the first meeting, if you, as we, the second to the nine. And you have the sixteen, forty-third, right?
This is the last two.
We have you now.
I'm just alone here, buddy.
Yeah, we'll have a celebration that night. Yeah, well, I, I, the second seems a bit much, right, folks, you think the second's. Yes, yeah. Okay, yeah, people are tired on the road, so. Yeah, yeah, no, that's what I said, another twenty-third, is that what you're gonna think of the night? Yeah, yeah, is that, is that good? Yeah, very good, better, better.
Twenty-four years, I might do if we had this.
Twenty-third for Jan.
I thought she said point out. And nothing matters if you don't do it at all, but January ninth will be in Scott Hills Town Hall from the evening. Not thirty days ago. Okay, but you very seldom ask, I would think, but just be aware of that.
Oh, okay. Oh, gotcha, yeah, I got you, you're spoken there, yeah, okay, that's fine. We'll change all that there. Yeah, if that works, okay, if that's okay, then all works out, we change, yeah, the second, we can have a lunch with everybody, I think so. Um, okay, how about, we're, we're looking quickly, folks, I know, just saw this.
Oh, and you, you see the different points that, um. You know, Sandra put on here, right, you know, those points, one of the things was as far as the fourth is alive.
Yeah, it's gonna go with the July second one, that. Another issue. Right, we, big vacation week, July.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Thursday. You guys are only the second, right, you're thinking, what do you think? Yeah, I mean, whatever you all think. Um, is that a run?
You do, you, in, um, July, you, you have also the five weeks. So you put the ninth and the twenty-third, break and the twenty-third.
Might do that.
I'd rather do that.
Might do that, sure. We can redo, break, can you get a new, new calendar?
And I, I think also at the point is that you're not gonna be using classes unless it's a special meeting.
Right.
So that throws it down a little bit more. So instead of ending at the sixteenth, you hang on the twenty-third.
All right, yeah, that's right. So that's gonna be the ninth as well, huh?
Now, the third, September.
Is that Tuesday after your holiday? What's that?
I don't know if that matters, I think, so much, does it? Yeah, does the third matter, anybody, September third? Yeah, the second has different, it's, um, January, um, so, um. Okay, so we're good then, so we need to change those dates.
Just so you know that November twelfth is my birthday.
Yeah, everybody's getting the chance to have a meeting on their birthday, right?
So, we good? Do we need to vote, do we need to take a motion here?
Yeah, if you change, well, add the manager, that would be great.
Okay, we'll take a, um, a motion to go, the calendar as, as I mentioned.
I know we adopt the. We'll prove adoption of the town council meeting calendar, we have amended for twenty twenty-four, January of twenty twenty-four.
I'll say.
All right, all, any other questions, we're good, all with a favor? So, is it possible now to, um, not do anything else? Maybe a quick town manager report, but then just our, because we still have that executive session rule. Yeah, I would just, let's chat.
It's okay with the subcommittee, it's okay with the subcommittee.
Okay.
But what I think I want you to be aware of.
Yes.
If you're the new people.
Yes.
Is that sort of, the, the appointments themselves will all come due in January.
Yeah.
So January, that January ninth meeting, you're only to have pages of appointments. To be then appointed on the twenty-third.
Right.
So I just want to make sure you're all aware of that.
Yeah, we're aware. It's okay, let's, let's not do that, cause we're.
Well, it's, I mean, you go to committee meetings anyway.
No.
Yeah, the, the committees don't matter, the other committee, uh, the other, like, the board of ethics.
Um, so where are we at now?
Standing.
When did that put it to? Town manager briefly, wanna do it?
Yeah, I mean, I have a good ten items, so.
Really?
I do, because they don't know. Yeah, but I won, I can.
You can do everything.
No, I'll be back next time.
Well, important, what's matter of course, maybe.
What's important?
Yes, I know it's all important.
Yeah, they're all important, um, but one thing that I need your input.
Yes.
Of direction on this. So, um, this has to do with, uh, applying for grants.
Yes.
Well, if you recall, during the budget process. Tony had requested matching funds. I thought it's the, the high or at least two hundred, but. By the time you done with the whole, for the process, we ended up with zero and he said, well, come back if you. If you have time for grants. Um, so appropriate funds for matching or cost associated with it, so give you some examples. Uh, stick grant funding, round is coming up in twenty twenty-four. You know, this could be anything for the TOD projects, uh, except you can't find the capital improvement. Um, East Bowl and, you know, Paul, if you wanna do any renovations down there. Parking lots of, say, we learn, so there's not a, but it's in there and you feel that you can get about five hundred thousand. If you count matches twenty percent, so at the hundred. Uh, giving some example, the other one that's been struggling with, that it'd be an aquatic invasive species. Grant. Water, species have taken over, you know, people that have been working on that, um, with possibility, people get a grant there. Hundred thousand, the match is twenty-five grand. Um, there's a recreational finance grant, uh, opportunity that we can apply. Uh, up to perhaps, you know, three hundred thousand. So twenty percent match, they're acquiring that sixty grand, but good investments, you know, you make twenty percent and you get as much of a return. Then the connectivity grant, you keep doing the sidewalks. They pay one hundred percent of the construction, but you need to pro. Come up with a proposal and a plan that might cost anywhere from five to fifty to a hundred thousand or so. Question is.
Yes, what's the question?
If, if. Before we. Do anything, put the, I can't buy any of these grants and without matching grant.
Without money, yeah.
And then also some of these like the connectivity, you have to hire someone. Who actually scaling, and that's what gets you the grant, if they actually, they use the shovel and you.
Yeah, right.
Sure, we go.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we can. Probably wait, uh, since there, we got, he did most of the grant, granting and applications. Uh, till January, but. I hate to leave money on the table, but that also means we have to make a commitment, wanna make sure we. Are ready to fund and run the town.
And how many, all those things you mentioned.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna do.
What is that, what is that upset?
Two hundred and thirty-five to two eighty-five, to three hundred, so, so.
Hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, but you get a million dollars in return.
Maybe, you get the grant.
But if, if you don't get it.
If you did projects that you, like, for example, the trails thing, what, what is, are you looking to, to that?
We, we need.
You're, you're there, but they're.
We need some specifics.
Yes, and specifics to be nice.
Yes, and maybe we pick and choose.
Just fascinating, you, you wanna go observe nature, are you okay? So, on, on that nature, I'm going to go script here.
Yeah.
You, you got the message from Mr. Mahoney. Right? It was a link that's in this morning. So, we ought to celebrate this. The, uh, some of the trails that, uh, we've been working on, out in the morning. And it's the New England National Scenic Trail, so. It's the Metacormack and the Metaraca Trail. They've been designated National Park designation, so Boeing has a National Park designation on these trails, yeah.
Wow.
Darny cool. Jim.
National Park. We tried to mission now and stuff?
I, I don't know.
Only the part of government can, yeah, they can.
The blue blazed and all that stuff, so, uh, we'll send you the links, but it's pretty cool to see something national going through.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, that is cool, that's great.
Back to the question.
Yes.
James, you wanna give a couple of examples, of those like sure shot ones that you might go and do?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you gave exam, you know, good examples and it's really. You know, a question of kind of, you know, in lining up. Preparing ourselves for grants that we know are gonna be available next, you know, in the next period of time, six, seven, eight months. And, um, you know, having, and rather than kind of being in a reactionary mode and trying to, you know, um. Put together the things at the last minute, we can prepare ahead of time, like for the connectivity grant, you, you. We just got the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant this year, right? And, um, you know, so we have an opportunity for another update, eight hundred thousand dollars for next year, but if, you know, i- if we design the sidewalks. It's gonna really put us in good stead and. We had designed a bunch of sidewalks before and now we've kind of got to the point where we've built them all out, so. I, I guess it's just, you know, again. If we can, um, take some funds and have an account for it. And then when, when we'll, we'll come to the council with a request. On a case-by-case basis with the details once we get there, but, you know, if we don't have an account where we can tap for this. Then we're always scrambling and looking, where's the money, you know, where, uh, there's not, there's not an account that you can tap for, you know. For some of these things, and so we're all, you know, this, this would put us in a position, so we're ready to take advantage of these opportunities.
What do you say, Mr. Board of Finance guy?
Well, thank you, my.
See, I'm listening, you're sleeping, Raoul, I know you're, but. I'm putting on a spot here.
Really begin at the board of finance?
No, I, I, well, I mean, we can. We can send it about, yeah, yeah.
Which, which, which projects are most. Worlds at this point in time?
Yeah.
We should start with that.
Yeah, we, so can we in January get? A, a little bit of a list and I, I, I mean, it makes sense what you're saying, I, I, we just gotta. Figure out. How much it is, a little more detail, and then we could, uh. Figure that out, put somebody aside and, and then, you know, run it through the board of finance, of course.
In my opinion, all you said for the time.
Yes, okay, well, of course they are.
So, because you're, you're spending twenty cents on the dollar.
True. Yeah. Again, right, I get it, again. So, just. Give us some details and the actual amount. So it's not, you know, they're ready to go.
Like the sidewalks versus.
No, get them, and what you can walk through us, let them see, let's see them all. And then, you know, maybe we do do them all. Yeah, right, it'd be reasonable, I mean, I'm. Are, are you looking for a general policy, I mean?
No, so that, I mean, this is the reason why I put it in the budget last year, right? So for whatever reason to take it out.
I was just in the budget last year.
He started with a million.
Oh, wow, that's.
I, I thought, conservative, bring it to a hundred and I go zero.
Oh, okay, wow, I understand, it's a new year.
So. My, and the, the board of finance and the council said, well. You don't wanna tax people, that's something that you might not apply, which is true, now we have an opportunity, these things are like after the spring. I wanna make sure that you have the appetite. Do we gonna have to make an appropriation from unbalanced, it's I. Don't like to do, I think the board of finance won't like to.
So turn it there, that's what it's there for.
All right, so. So, I, I just wanna know if there's an appetite. To do this, otherwise we won't waste time putting things together.
I mean, I, I think there is, but, yeah, I mean, yeah, we just wanna get some more.
I mean, I have the whole thing, I'll just give it to you, writing, I just scribbled, I draw over, but.
Yeah.
And it, and it would be easier for you to email it to us.
Yeah, just email it to us.
Yeah, true.
Put on the next agenda, then we'll, we'll look at it, right?
Don't take a lot of time, I mean.
No.
It doesn't have to be.
But we do have to see some details and, and give you.
Sure.
And, you know, maybe there's something to say, oh, these are more priority, we'll put a hundred grand aside and you can withdraw from that.
But also I thought the council, do you have priorities, so to me, I guess.
Well, we all have our priorities, I guess, but we try and do with the, we just wanna do with the tax payer.
My priority is twenty cent of dollars.
That's it, nothing else important?
I do, are you, this is in your package?
Yes.
I've done a, well, it was still in my calendar here.
Yes.
So this is all the, uh.
Yeah, did a great job.
Five bridges. In, uh, Pistol Creek and it gives you all the same, you've got completely getting it out, building it new. And we saved thirty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's right.
So. You already got some. Okay. So that's interrupt, nothing else, early, nothing, others, the updates I can, uh, in total, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Roger, appreciate that, so if, if, uh. If there's, uh. Just wanna do the acceptance of the, of the minutes and then we can do our executive session. Right, they're good?
Yep.
You good, Zach? I'm sorry. Um, so we should take a, a motion on the, um. The two minutes. Prove the October twenty-fourth meeting. Depending on who hosts. Yeah, you don't stand on those two, right?
Twenty-first, I was.
Yeah, you. Oh, yeah, there you go.
Can I combine them?
No, except.
I move accept the minutes of the October twenty-fourth meeting.
Thank you, second.
Second.
All of the favor?
You know, I move accept the October twenty-fourth.
Thank you, uh, all of the favor?
I.
One of station, right, yes.
We did not, I'll make a two second.
Yeah, yes, please.
So, um. I'm the honorary chair of the Reeds Across America and, uh. The Fairview Cemetery, this coming Saturday, we're placing wreaths, uh, eight AM, anybody who'd like to come out, join us. And we'll have a small ceremony at twelve o'clock, they come back afterwards. Uh, but it's great, there's a lot of volunteers, some young kids come out and help us. And, uh, I think we decorate probably close to a thousand wreaths between Fairview and the cemetery over in.
Oh, the, the.
Those two. Yeah, very, very, so it's a beautiful event, it's magical when you see all those wreaths out there, it's nice that it snows a little bit, but I think it's gonna be warm.
Yeah.
Which is fine, cause, you know, that's all I have, I just wanted to share that.
This coming weekend.
This coming Saturday, yes. Uh, in New Britain, it's at the Fairview Cemetery. Yes, well, a lot of the guys that are involved with this are Elks, we actually meet at the Elks, um, it's really, it's, it's a nice event.
And is the twelve o'clock thing the thing we did last year at the New Britain High School, is that different?
Something different, last year they did the convoy in the.
Yes, are they doing that?
They're not doing that, for whatever reason, they're actually through Connecticut right now, big trailer. And then. This, then they do like, just a few, the mayor will be there, and. You know, like, people, they get out. Um. So it, it is. Now, they didn't stop at high school this year, I don't know if they stopped somewhere else. Because it's, and it's really, it's a nice thing to get involved with if you can, we owe our veterans. Everything, I truly do, our country. So, thank you all.
Right, there you go.
One more short thing, I just wanna thank and congratulate the Lurie Lions. For that tree walk.
No, yeah, that's pretty, yeah.
And I give a security next year, that'll be at least twice as big.
Yeah, that's, I think people were asking, well, you can get involved with that tree, so. Yeah, yeah, my top and two other judges judged on it. Gary Schmidt won, uh. The other line, oh, man, why'd you pick him, but no, 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 he did, he did a heck of a job, I guess he, he went every day and fixed it up and he was the best. No, it's, no, no, he did a good job.
Republics, maybe.
He did a good job, yeah, the. Yeah, it was fun. So, Charlie, would you be really happy trees? Yeah, so anyway, yeah, that's great, dude, that was a great thing, walking around. Okay, so, we, we will have to, uh, make a motion to go into executive session, right? I'll be waiting, uh, who, who's that?
The first one, I would like Dr. BQ.
Okay, that's why you're the lucky guy that gets to stay. Good luck to you. Okay, for the second one, so you. On the second one. And our town.
Thanks, I'll shake.